Check one, two. Check one, two.
All right. I want to thank everyone again for your patience this evening. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. The time is 7:27 PM, and I will go ahead and ask our city clerk to call the roll call, please.
Mayor Soares.
Present.
Vice Mayor Brigand, sir.
Present.
Council members, Gordon.
Present.
Lettichew.
Present.
Mathias.
Present.
Matulak.
Present.
All mayors.
Present.
Great. Thank you. That is going to, I believe, bring us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Let me make sure. Yes. If you all could please stand and join the council for the pledge. All right. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is our action calendar, but we did just come out of closed session, so I'll ask our Assistant City Attorney to please give us a quick report out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Council did meet in closed session this evening on five items. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code 54956.9. There were four of those cases. The case names and the case numbers are in the agenda. And the final item was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, two items. Counsel gave direction to staff and no other action was taken.
All right. Thank you. That's going to bring us to our action calendar. We just have our one item tonight, and I'll ask our city clerk, Abirson, to please announce item 48.
Item continued from March 18, 2025. Receive update on unhoused situation and possibly provide direction on city programs.
All right. Thank you. And so I believe we have Assistant City Manager Hane, and then we have Natalie Peterson here down at our podium. I believe we do have a presentation, and I'll ask Manny to open up our public comment. I know we have many in-person speakers already. Anyone wishing to address the council on this item, you can sign up at the kiosks in the back as well as online. And what I intend to do for this item is we're going to have a short staff presentation. They've got, they've put together some updates since our last meeting. I'll ask council if we have any general comments or questions, and then we'll open it up for public comment. We really do tonight. This is a continuation of the previous discussion. We really want to have time for council discussion tonight, so we're going to keep that in mind as we work to get the information, get through our speakers, make sure everybody's heard, and make sure we have some good time for discussion. So with that, I'll turn it over to our staff team.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. As just discussed, we are revisiting the item from March. This is our second meeting, so this evening we'll review what happened at the last meeting, some additional information that staff brought together on some prior sites that were looked at by prior city councils and community members, and then we'll have a few recommendations that we'll be asking for council direction on, as well as hearing from the public again. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Natalie Peterson to present the staff presentation.
Good evening. Thank you. Next slide, please, Manny.
So tonight, we are going to quickly go over those highlights from last meeting, past opportunities presented to council, and next steps. We, in essence of time, will go through these rather quickly, but I do have additional context if there's questions from council or the community. Next slide. So at our March 18 meeting, we did go over quite a few items, but there's just a couple areas that I wanted to provide a little bit of clarity on. We did receive some questions from community members. So in terms of CAP Solano JPA and the Continuum of Care, also known as the COC, they are traditionally the group that oversees the funding and programs for the unhoused here in Solano County. They also operate services traditionally, again, out of the county or through the JPA and COC. The city did recently start to provide support due to some lack of resources, especially during COVID and then leading out of the COVID era. The JPA does come up with a region-wide strategy and priorities related to unhoused dollars for the county. Next slide. And just a bit of additional context. At our last meeting, we, staff had quoted, you know, an approximate $360,000 annually towards encampment cleanups. That is really just for staff time associated with what I would call as like the boots-on-the-ground work. So our public work staff being onsite, our police department being onsite, and then staff from the city manager's office and the city attorney's office preparing the postings, going out and doing the notices ahead of time. So that, that time, if, if not being used for those cleanups, those dollars would not necessarily be saved. They would be reallocated to additional projects that the staff people would be working on. Thank you. Next slide. So May 26 of 2020, previous council was presented with a handful of potential locations to address some sort of temporary shelter or safe parking, safe camping type opportunities for the unhoused. These were the sites that were reviewed by council. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, Manny, so that we can see the photos of them. Thank you. So the highlighted red areas are where the property is located. At that point in time, council did not direct staff to move forward with any of the locations presented. Next slide, and that will show you three additional sites. They are either publicly owned by the city, publicly owned by the county, or vacant properties that the city could potentially look at purchasing at that point in time. There are issues with some of these sites as there is development proposed on some of them, but we did want to show what past council had been provided. Next slide. So in between 2020 and then the 2022 presentation, city staff did bring forward a proposal from a nonprofit to do a safe camping opportunity at a local church that would have wraparound services in the parking lot. That was originally proposed at 921 Amador, which is the Church of the Nazarene. And an additional property during that meeting was also put on the table at 1145th Street. Council at that time did not decline to provide the permit that would be needed to do that temporary shelter. So in February of 2020, staff brought forward several potential programs or projects for council's review for additional research into. Those included safe camping, safe parking for both cars, RVs, or a combination of both. All winter warming centers, a family navigation center, transitional housing models, additional permanent supporting housing developments, stakeholder meetings for either community and/or council, and various different ordinances. These are really high-level programs and can be scaled up or down if there are things that council would like the city staff to look into and be tailored to Vallejo's needs. Next slide. So during 2022, staff did research from several different groups that were operating different types of programs. So for an example, a safe tent camping that was reviewed had, was run by a nonprofit. It operates 24/7 because, you know, to have somebody set up their tent and then leave during the day and just come back and sleep isn't necessarily feasible. There's a variety of different services that would be needed, but ideally, at minimum, you would be looking at bathrooms, showers, and some sort of security for the location. Adding meals, case management, all of those things would potentially cost additional dollars. From the programs at that point in time, anywhere from 11% to 35% of the individuals obtained permanent housing. And they can really range in cost from, you know, anywhere from $3,000 to $4,000 if you're doing that with just volunteers, which the groups that did it with just volunteers highly recommended against that after they closed because it is not consistent programming support at the location. With having a contractor, that price obviously increases anywhere from $30,000 to $60,000 per tent per year. Next slide. So safe car parking models, again, similar. These ones can definitely just be done during a specific time period. There's more flexibility with, with moving off-site, but again, you would like to likely include some sort of bathroom accessibility. And then overnight security, you can, again, add additional resources on, on top of that. Those outcomes were anywhere from 25% to 63% obtaining housing, and the cost range per car per year was roughly $10,000. Safe RV parking, again, similar model, however, likely 24/7 because once you get the RV there and you get the pop-ups and things out, not the easiest thing to move every day, would likely need to have some sort of restroom accessibility as well as security guards. It can be combined with cars and RVs. There's just different levels of needs and services that would be associated with that. 23% to 46% obtained permanent housing, and that was anywhere from $18,000 to $27,000 per vehicle per year. Next slide. So just to do the breakdown, and again, these are 2022 numbers for the costs. If we were to look at it and to quickly pull together for what it would be, this, this year, you would anticipate a 3% cost of living adjustment over the last three years. So that's roughly an 18% increase. So safe cars would go up to about 12K per vehicle. Safe RVs would be 22,000 to 32,000 per RV, and tents would be anywhere from roughly $4,000 to $72,000 per tent per year. Next slide. Another option that council had the opportunity to consider was winter-long extreme weather centers. So those would operate during November through April every night, regardless of weather. Typically, again, at 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. You can either do them as a referral basis through operators or a walk-in, providing some basic services and meals. From the outcomes from other centers that we looked at, you had anywhere from 12 to 60 individuals per night. I think that was very weather-dependent, and the cost range from that is anywhere from $25,000 to $125,000 per month. And that depends on the level of services that you provide and/or the amount of doors that you open, if it's one center versus multiple. Next slide. Another opportunity would be a family navigation center. So this would be specifically designed for families with children. The current navigation center is 18 and over, so there is not the flexibility to have children there. Services there would be, you know, similar to what are proposed at the navigation center here, which would be case management, food, and shelter. Anywhere from 33% to 40% exited to housing, and a rough estimate would be approximately $2.5 million per year based on what other locations are operating at, plus that increase for updated dollars today. But it could be higher because addressing the needs of our youth can often be more complex than addressing the needs for adults. Next slide. Transitional housing projects is something that I think a lot of cities have, have looked at, as well as the City of Vallejo. These are more temporary units. They are not designed and built to last long-term. Most of them have, you know, a 15- to 20-year range, depending on the structure that you're looking at. Those, again, would typically have case management, counseling referrals, 24/7 security. The units themselves cost anywhere from $13,000 to $30,000. Other costs that would need to be considered are, you know, if we need to purchase property or do remediation to property and any utilities and connections that may need to come. And operations budget would be dependent, again, on the level of services being provided. Some examples of, of the transitional housing could be tiny homes, pallet shelters, conestoga huts, et cetera. Next slide. Permanent supportive housing developments, again, that it would be similar to Broadway Project, Blue Oak Landing. Wraparound services are a requirement of permanent supportive housing. So again, operational costs would vary, again, depending on the, the level of that. They can often be covered either fully or partially through rental subsidies. The cost range back in 2022 was about 400 to 500K, but would likely increase from there. Blue Oak Landing was $750,000 per door, and Broadway was 550 per door, just to give you estimates for projects here in Vallejo. Next slide. So the process to potentially implement a housing-related, whether it's a shelter or permanent housing, would be identifying the funding to both build and operate, conduct research about programs, best practices from other locations, what would be needed here in Vallejo, do community engagement regarding the projects and the locations that are being looked at. Locations and partners are a big one, bringing in operators through an RFP, going through the permitting processes for the building, environmental reviews of the property, and then ultimately, construction could begin. Next slide. Non-housing-related projects that council had looked at in the past were community stakeholder meetings, whether that is at the council level or within the community. Potentially doing fee waivers for homeless services, so permitting fees for events such as mobile showers or things like that could be potentially waived, or a fee waiver for affordable housing projects, which would be, again, waiving the fees for the review of the proposals for feasibility, so they would get kind of a cursory glance to see, yes, this may or may not work, or here's what would need to be done to make this work before the developer ultimately moved forward with pulling permits and trying to start that project or potentially purchasing that piece of property. Next slide. Other initiatives that could be looked at would be safe parking ordinances for churches, religious organizations, or nonprofits, so being able to utilize their parking lots to do this with some sort of regulations, including reporting requirements back to the city, designating hours for parking vehicles, how many onsite, and nighttime quiet hours for the residents who may be around them, or utilizing SB4, which is an Affordable Housing on Faith and Higher Education Lands Act from 2023, which was signed into law by Governor Newsom in October of '23. This applies to land owned by independent institutions of higher education or religious institutions. It qualifies as housing as a right, as, as of right for a sequoia exemption, and it would be, 100% of the units must be deemed affordable for the project. Next slide. So challenges to really all projects in the city, particularly regarding the unhoused, is funding partners to do the projects. is funding partners to do the projects, community support for the projects, location identification, and staffing levels. Next slide. So next steps tonight that we are looking for council is to provide us direction on areas for further research for staff to do and come back to at a future meeting, and direction on encampment cleanups. I did just want to note also on this side that we are in the process of doing, starting the selection for our unhoused strategic plan. That is tentatively to have a contract before council in May with somebody starting shortly thereafter, and the timeline really could depend on the level of input, community engagement that council is looking for this consultant to potentially work on, if that's what council ultimately decides to move forward with. But that does not mean that staff cannot be looking into potential projects you guys are interested in during that project. It doesn't have to wait until that is concluded. With that, Gillian, unless you have anything else to add, I am happy to hand it back over to council.
I think just one or two things. Manny, if you could go back to the slide that has the metric with the options and the different prices. Natalie, if you could just expand a little bit on the different cities that we looked at in 2022, when we looked at these options and we looked at these pricing numbers, and mind you, supplies and services have largely gone up in the last three years, but I just wanted to give some of the comparables that, the research that we did back in 2022 to kind of get some of these numbers. And then also a caveat that these numbers don't necessarily include wraparound services, right? So we're talking about an operator to operate a safe tent camping at, you know, $60,000 per tent per year, doesn't mean that they're going to get the medical, the dental, the home location, the job training, and all of those services. This is just an operator to operate the facility, which would mean fencing and security and bathrooms and showers and just safety and just maintaining the location. So as you looked at those other navigation center operator contracts in the multimillions, that would be in addition to these, some of these costs as well. So just kind of wanted to give you that perspective that while these, if you look at this and go, ooh, $3,000 a tent per year, we could probably do that, it's the additional operation and safety and security of the site that could potentially cost more. So Natalie, yeah, if you just want to expand on some of the cities that we looked at, where we got these numbers from?
Absolutely. Thank you. So for the safe tent camping, we looked particularly at Hope Village over in Martinez, and past council members did go and tour that site with the group prior to it being closed down. That is one of the groups that did it with just volunteers and highly recommended against doing that. But that is how they were able to do it relatively low. They had no staff overhead, no, you know, required services. Everything was on a volunteer basis. We also looked at several projects that were operating in the time up in Sacramento. A lot of those have also been closed or transitioned into other types of projects. For the safe car camping, we did look at several different locations, and that's also in coordination with the RVs, which includes San Diego, who did RV and car camping, Santa Rosa, Sebastopol, which is also closed, as well as San Francisco, who recently closed their car and RVs as of March 1st of this year. And there, unfortunately, when a lot of these programs do close down, the individuals that were residing there are left behind for the city to help transition into other housing or making sure that they're connected to the coordinated entry system to be part of that.
Thank you, Natalie.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate the updated information. And so as I mentioned earlier, what I'm going to do is invite council members for maybe a more general round of comments or questions, one each, and then we'll go into our commenters, and I already see the vice mayor. Go ahead.
I just had a quick question. I know we've talked in the past about the warming shelter opening during times when it's cold or raining, or if it's really hot when it's during the summer, but it has very low attendance, and I know that it costs staff money to be there, and there's not beds or cots or anything that the people are expected to sleep on the floor. Have we looked at doing hotel vouchers instead of doing in-house warming shelters? Have we looked at that in the past?
So that is an opportunity. Several location, or several cities were doing that. They had kind of emergency vouchers, would get somebody anywhere from three nights to 10 nights in a hotel. So that is an opportunity. It's obviously more costly because depending on the number of rooms that you're getting, I think there's also potentially some liabilities that go with that of, you know, unfortunately, when we had Project Room Key, a lot, there were rooms that were damaged as part of that, not saying that that's necessarily something that would happen with this program, but there are other issue, potential issues that we would likely need to look into as we, if we were to roll something like that out.
Yeah. I was thinking more of like the one-nighter, like if it's going to be raining for X number of hours, whatever, that we would, instead of opening the warming shelter, we would just offer hotel vouchers to give them a bed to sleep in versus sleeping on the floor.
Yeah, so that is something that we did, we have looked at, and is something that could potentially be rolled into that unhoused strategic plan or looked into more and brought back to council with higher-level detail.
Can we look at, based on the number of people who have stayed in the past, kind of what that would cost versus what it costs us to run the warming shelters? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Natalie, and thank you, Gillian, for the presentation. Through your slides, there was a, there was a quick slide that you noted $24,000, and I assume it was a year, for apartments. Can you give us, and I know part of that conversation was we've looked into the past of hotel renovations or teaming up with hotels and some mobile home park acquisitions. Can you give us an update of those potential opportunities?
So, yes, so the $24,000 was the average cost as of 2022. We would def, we can look into getting an updated average cost for an apartment unit in, for today. In terms of the mobile homes and/or purchasing and converting hotels into individual units, those are definitely both still opportunities, if that's something that council's interested in exploring. They, they all obviously have costs associated with them to do it, as well as likely needing to have some sort of operator and/or services attached to it.
And through the mayor, I can add to that. So the mobile home parks that we did look at prior, they are now implementing a grant-funded program for homeless and housing, and so the owners decided to retain those mobile home parks and not sell. And then as far as the motels, we did look into several and kind of gave that cost-benefit analysis of the upgrades and the millions that needed to be invested versus building the new. And at that point, the council's focus was on focusing on Broadway. The lifetime of that facility was longer, and so that was the choice then. But there are definitely a couple motels, hotels right now that are still interested in coming to the city and partnering, that if council wants staff to prioritize that, we can continue to look and do those cost-benefit analysis on those ones. Thank you.
Thank you for those updates. Thank you for the updates and the clarifications. And I think that, once again, brings up the big elephant in the room. We're simply talking about basically shelters for people to go into, but what's the big issue is, is we need to find wraparound services to help support a lot of the individuals, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's losing a job, whether it's drug addictions. It's those type of services that unless those are in place, this is going to be a continuing issue that we're going to run into for our unhoused individuals. So that's something that is a bigger financial burden that we need to figure out how to work it, or how to figure that out, because when we look at the permanent housing, in my mind, it doesn't seem like a sustainable or practical reason to think that 55, $555,000 to $750,000 a door is a, is a sustainable and a, a practical financial burden to put on a city for looking at that. So I think we have to look at these other options that are looking, that are actually more attainable for long-term solutions. So thank you for that.
All right. Thank you. Any other councilmembers want to weigh in before we go to public comment?
Just for clarification. So right now, we're going to ask the public to speak, and then afterwards, we're going to chime in?
Exactly.
Okay, I'll wait for after that. Thanks.
Everybody else waiting? All right. So for public comment, how many speakers do we have at this time in person? Oh, Councilmember Letezu wants to go, I think. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to say to each and every individual in this room, one of the things that I'm looking for, and I'd like to hear, and I will say this in advance, I've seen all the emails, I've talked to many individuals, and what I'm asking when each and every one of you who have requested to speak is, what is our part in this, regardless of what side we're on, or how we're looking at it, what our viewpoints are, is what can be some of our solutions as a community? We need to be solution-oriented in this process. And the fact of the matter is that, yes, we have unhoused individuals, and the fact of the matter is we have encampments, and those encampments are not the ways that we would like to live, whether we're living in them or we are surrounded by them in our neighborhoods. So that is fully understood, and the real question for all of us is, what can we do together in this government to help make our environment better for all of us? It's really important.
Okay, Mayor, we have 36 speakers in house.
So we have 36 here. How many do we have online?
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, we have three.
We have three. That'll probably increase. I, so last time we met, we had about 40 speakers, so actually about the exact same number as this, and it took some time. So what we're proposing is, we're going to do, we're going to recommend two minutes a speaker. We're not going to cut you off strictly, because we know many of you plan for three, but we're trying to strike a balance here where we can make sure everybody's heard and respect everybody's time, the folks that are at the, near the end of the list that have come down here and are going to be waiting an hour, hour and a half to speak, and then we do want to have time for some significant council discussion. So that's the proposal. Again, we're not going to, we're not going to cut you off right at that two-minute mark, but we're just going to ask you kindly, in the interest of everybody and making sure everybody's heard, to try to stick to that two minutes. And I'll say as well, I think with, you know, I framed this a little bit last time, we are, you know, we're starting a process. This is definitely not going to be the only conversation we have. This is definitely not going to be the only time we do this. Hopefully, we'll have some other spaces to have these discussions, and so I'll say, like I did at the last meeting, that please also know this is by no means the only time we're going to be getting public input on these items, because we're dealing with a complex regional, statewide, and national issue that is going to take nuance and a lot of work to solve. So with that, we'll go ahead and call up our speakers. I think we have a two-minute clock, and like I said, we'll, we'll just try to make sure that it's fair to everybody. So if you need to go a little over, that's fine. We'll just kind of ask you to wrap as quickly as you can after that two minutes.
Okay, and we'll call the speakers in order in groups of three so that you know when your time is coming up, so we can try to speed the process along. The first speaker is Ann Carr, followed by Jean Lycover, and then Eli Smith.
This doesn't go against my time, does it? I feel so powerful. Hello, everyone. I did prepare for three minutes, so I will race to cut to the chase. I'm requesting that you continue clearing the encampments. It's made a big difference in District Four, where we've had 80% of the large encampments. Secondarily, if you pause now with the clearing of the encampments while other cities are making their anti-camp, anti-camping ordinance tighter, you make Vallejo more of a target for the unhoused. However, I also propose that you move those who are encamped right now at White Slough and downtown into the navigation center immediately. It's inexcusable that it's taken so long for it to open, and I don't know what the problem is in getting a contract and services, but it would be better than having people outside for both the unhoused and for the city. Might sound like a radical proposal, but it's taken too long. Pass a park and sleep ordinance for overnight car camping at churches. That would address the 28% of the people who are sleeping in their cars now. Number four, locate someplace away from residences for safe tent camping and double-check the numbers that it would cost $31,000 to $61,000 per tent per year. Those numbers don't make sense to me. Designate indoor locations for meal delivery and cleanup. The remains of individual meal packages get left on the ground feeding a rat infestation. At the county level, we need shelter beds, transition housing, a focus on the unsheltered and proactive street outreach to the encampments. When I'm almost out of time, the last thing I'll ask for is pass an ordinance making public camping a misdemeanor, not to criminalize people, but so that there is a record of the contact, and so there's an incentive to move into supportive housing or treatment or whatever they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Lycover, followed by Eli Smith, and then Roberta Ilaf.
My name is Jean Lycover. I've been a resident for 40 years.
Jean, can you just, yep, there it is.
How's that?
That's perfect.
Okay. In 2009, the county did a $10,000, they paid consultants $10,000 to find a solution to the homeless problem. The solution was housing first. Every study that has ever been done says housing first solves the problem. Now, it was interesting to me to hear the city staff say that in 2024, overall homelessness grew by 18%. Okay. However, in some states, particularly Utah and Nevada, homeless vets decreased by 8%. Did you guys know that? I just found out by looking at this website called inhomelessness.org that had these statistics. And the reason they managed to decrease the number of homeless vets was because the federal government funded the programs, which were housing first and then wraparound services for these vets, psychological counseling job stuff. Okay, so I know that we don't have the money to do that, and I really think it's very unlucky that we're going to get any funding from the present national administration. I don't have a solution, but I have an issue with the research that city staff has come up with. It's incomplete, and every time people have come in here and suggested solutions or help for the homeless, the city staff is, has taken up, that won't work, that won't work, we can't afford it, that won't work. And I think city staff is part of our problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eli Smith, followed by Roberta Ilaf, and then Sean O'Malley.
Hi. So I had a speech prepared, but I want to honor the request of Dr. Letezu, and please bear with me, because some of this is going to be ad lib. But I'm standing here, I love Vallejo, I know you love it too, or you wouldn't be sitting here. But I want to remind you that love is an action, it's not a feeling. And you say that you want solutions. There's so much to talk about, and there's not a lot of time today, and I am tired. And there are some people here that have been choosing to act all the time, every day, to end homelessness. When you ask for solutions, one of the solutions would be to engage directly with those people who are acting to end homelessness, because it's not possible to stand here and talk in-depth about a lot of these things. I want to echo the previous commenter, there has been no in-depth research that has really been done. I'm sorry to say that, but we are at a point where I think that justice really is taking precedence over politeness. People are not a problem to solve. Address the problems you know how to solve for the benefit of the entire community. Please, we know how to solve garbage. Pick up the garbage. Once every few months is not going to pick up the garbage. Provide some kind of fence so that people can't come in and dump, so that people can't rip garbage up, so that people can't, you know, terrorize people. We know how to respond to crime. We can do that. We can respond to crime with investigation. We know how to do all of these things to deal with rats. Put in place harm reduction strategies. Find somewhere for people to go. We provided an example of a lease agreement that does not cost the city hardly anything, has a good neighbor policy, as well as liability waivers. People do not need incentive, to be incentivized to move into housing. There is no housing. Please, we can do this together. Involve us, give us a chance to prove it, which we've never been given. Vote for the needs of the actual majority and transform your love for the community into a tangible action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roberta Ilaf, followed by Sean O'Malley, and then Kevin Jones.
I'm going to echo some of the same things that have already been said. We are, our District Four has a predominance of these encampments, and it's just, my family won't even come downtown to events because of all of the encampments. And it's just such a, an eyesore and discouragement for anybody that comes into town. This is our, our open door, you know, to come into town and we see all these encampments. You think that's inviting to new business or to new residents? No. We need to find some, I, I, this, I don't think any of the solutions that were presented are, are really realistic at all. I think that it, that it's far from being, being the available, the realistic available options that we need to be looking at. And I know that we need to have more money in our town. We need, we're trying to draw new businesses to our town, and having these encampments that are, are at our front door are just a discouragement to any of that, and that's no help to us. And I hope that, that staff can come together and look at some more realistic options that are, and, and they're doable, they're doable. There's been things, many things suggested that have been discarded or oh, poo-pooed, and oh, no, 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 that won't work. And I think that we just need to take a second look at them and make them work, because we have so many people here that need, need housing and need, you know, options to, places to go. And I hope that you can find these solutions, because the city wants to, we want to help you, the residents want to help, and so we want to see some action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean O'Malley, followed by Kevin Jones, and then Robert Topfer.
And then while, while Mr. O'Malley comes up here, anyone that speaks, there is a toggle switch on the podium that you can use to raise or lower it.
Got it. Good evening, City Council. I'm Sean O'Malley with the Homeless Union Vallejo. I want to talk about common ground. There's a lot of people in this room on both sides of the fence, so to speak, who want the same things. The homeless don't want garbage any more than anyone else. We're the first ones affected by it. You know, we'd like to have a hand in cleaning, help clean it up, to tell the truth. And we don't want crime either. We're the first ones to be victimized by it, because we're in the camps and we get robbed first. We don't want fires either, because we're the first ones to have our property destroyed by them. That's what we don't want. What we do want, there's a good side to all this. The Homeless Union would like to organize a cleanup drive for the White Slough area and all the other areas in the city that are, you know, needed. Like I said, we'd like to have a hand in cleaning up the garbage. We don't want garbage either. It's one of the major problems, and we'd like to help solve it. Port-a-potties, hand washing stations would be a benefit for the homeless, as well as the public health of the city. And fire extinguishers at the homeless areas seems like a no-brainer, to have them on hand, just in case, you know? And, you know, where would the funds come from? Well, I think there's something like three hundred and sixty thousand dollars slated for the 2025 year to fund the sweeps. I think that money should be diverted to the solution programs. I think it'd be better spent, as opposed to the sweeps. Sweeps aren't working. That's one thing that's clear. The sweeps aren't working, because if they were, why would you still have to be doing them if they worked? They're not. Maybe these other programs will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Jones, followed by Robert Topfer, and then Kathleen McNeil.
Hello, members of the City Council of Vallejo. Thank you for letting us be here tonight and speak to you. My name's Kevin. I've been in Vallejo since the early nineties. I love this town. I've left and I've come back many times. Being homeless in Vallejo is not something I would wish on my worst enemy. There's nothing like the feeling you get from people that look at you over the bridge of their nose every day. The things they say to us as they're driving by and we're walking, usually very degrading and very disrespectful, and it's not okay. We are not all criminals. Please stop placing us all in the same bowl. A lot of us have jobs. A lot of us are working to get off the streets, but it's very hard when you come through with your allocated three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year sweeps, to keep going and foot over foot over foot. You come in with your bulldozers, you rake up all our stuff, debris removal and, and bending cars, that's, that's crap. Excuse my language. And so as you're scooping everything up, you're taking all of our important paperwork and IDs and, and whatever we need to get off the streets, you're, it's gone. Sweep after sweep after sweep, and you guys just keep chasing us in a circuit like a racetrack from one spot to another. It does nothing. Sweeps don't work. Sixteen sweeps I've been a part of, trust me, I don't want to be here still. So, please, we can do this if you allow us to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Topfer, followed by Kathleen McNeil, and then Darrell Connolly.
My name's Robert. There's people in this room that would say that sweeps work and bring relief. Since I've been homeless, I was moved from Tennessee and Sonoma after two months, Lemon and Dur after eight, Fifth Street after forty-eight hours, the boat launch after four, Lemon and Dur after another eight months, from Azar Drive after two months, Alabama and Butte after a week, Azar Drive after seventy-two hours, Alabama and Butte after seventy-two hours, Oakwood and Masonic Court after forty-eight, Oakwood and Masonic after seventy-two, and then finally Locust and Masonic after a week. Obviously, sweeps aren't working, nor do they bring any form of relief. Sweeps seem to only put people in danger. Sweeps are touted as a method to clean up garbage, yet it's all left behind in spades after people are shoved away. People aren't debris. Homeowners and landlords don't garbage appliances and furniture at camps all the time. We get blamed for that, and it's, what are we going to use a treadmill for? We don't have power to, you know, we, we got our Lamborghini's right here. We walk every day. Please continue with this memoratorium, moratorium on the sweeps. It needs to stop. This, please, don't continue with this brutal cycle. It's shelves down on everyone else, and it's not right. Y'all have the means to make it happen to put people in homes, and years of inaction have really proven it. Thank you, guys. I wish you guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen McNeil, followed by Darrell Connolly, and then Thomas Ari Donch.
My name's Kat. You guys might remember me. I'm a founding member of Vallejo Homeless Union. I joined because my boyfriend, Barbie, mentioned it one night, said, hey, I was starting up this union. I said, maybe I'll go there. I might fit in. I didn't know what to expect. We help people ourselves, we help others in the same circumstances. We're volunteers, trying to make the community better. We meet at least once every week. I lived at the boat launch, the parking lot at Coconut Grove, the back parking lot behind the library, across the street from the library, the ferry parking lot, the Chevron parking lot on Benicia Road, the street alongside Power Mart, behind Faith Food Friday, Rice Street, Fifth Street, Cypress Street, the tennis courts, across from Children's Wonderland, Center in Pennsylvania, the softball field, the dog park, and Wilson Park. We were told last week there was a moratorium, but we were still forced to move every single Even though I was going through that in that same week, I attended the Common Ground Leadership Training, two union meetings and a council meeting. I did this because I'm trying to get to a better place for me, physically, mentally, and because I love the scrinity. Even though it was hardship making sure I had power and could get, even get to the meetings without losing my home, the positive outcome would be worth it to ultimately get myself off the street, to make Vallejo better. I can't imagine living anywhere else. Vallejo is my home. Let me keep my home.
Thank you.
Darrell Connolly, followed by Thomas Ari Donch, and then Kemper Stone.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. My name is Darrell Connolly, and I'm a resident of District Four. And I'd just like to say that the housing is only for a small percentage of the unhoused, and only a few will accept the offer. It's very expensive, it's ineffective, and often counterproductive. Speaking of expenses, having homeless individuals camp in front of the library and the city hall does not invite visitors to come downtown to shop. The city's lack of economic development and people experiencing homelessness are preventing new businesses from investing in our city, and we must address rejuvenating the city by first cleaning up the blight downtown and the pollution on the White Slough. Clearing encampments downtown must be a priority for the future of our city. And since clearing River Park in District Four, our neighborhood has become safer and cleaner. So let's clean up downtown and get the city back on the map as a desired destination.
Thank you.
Evening, Councilmembers. My name's Tom Ari Donch, not Harry Dodge. I've been here about twenty-one years. I brought my business from Vacaville to Vallejo. I bought a building here, a business building, and I had the honor to do Children's Wonderland and to make the city a better place through thousands of hours of pro bono work in the downtown to try and make it attractive, because I knew that it's what, making something attractive like the downtown is what brings businesses in. And light does not. I spent major donations and fundraising for Faith Food Friday, because there are a need for real economic development, real help to those that need that. And part of that help is attracting businesses. If you make a space that has too much blight, you basically create a thing that's not going to be an attraction to businesses. And so there's this kind of a catch-22. I would ask the, in terms of solutions, Mayor Storrs, I would ask the city staff if they even looked at Dignity Village, for instance, which is up in Portland, Oregon. Twenty-five years, I know the person who started it, architect who started it, worked with, very similar to a homeless union, did it with no city funding whatsoever. They are the highest amount of voting people in the city of Portland because of the very successful work that was done. So there are other models that are here. They don't have to cost what staff has put up here. There are tangible ways. I'm very much open to offering my services, but a very real part of running a business also is when the homeless encamp, the illegal homeless encampments come in, they affect places like my business building. Prior, I had eighteen years, when the homeless encampments moved in, I started being victimized by crime. And very frankly, it's a problem, and it's a blight. And if I was starting a new business, unfortunately, I've talked to a number of businesses in town that moved here and said, I would never do it again. And that's really sad to hear that, of major businesses that hired as many as twenty-five or fifty people. So this balance of finding needs to take place. There are the rights of the businesses, there are the rights of the citizens, and that needs to come into place. The many people who talked about, very eloquently, about wanting to clean up, let's work with that. Let's do something very real here that can be done without the, the budget that's, that's missing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kemper Stone, followed by Steve S., and then Jennifer S.
Well, I have many things I'd like to talk about, and I'm so disorganized that I'm glad we're reduced to two minutes, because that's about all I can squeeze one item. And that item is, is, I live at Blue Oak Landing. It was a blessing to get in there. I'm shocked to realize it costs seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that, because I had a six-bedroom home that cost less than that five years ago, and it's, it's heartrending that the cost of a, a studio would be exceeding that of probably half the homes or two-thirds of the homes in Vallejo. That's, that just makes no sense. My issue with Blue Oak Landing is that it's a very slick place. I can see how it costs that much. If you, well, the security door hasn't worked for ten, for ten months. So if you want to go take a look around, you're welcome to do it. Just walk in and help yourself. It's particularly interesting that behind they have a playground that consists of Astro's turf with a bunch of logs sticking out of the ground and a sign, "Do Not Climb On." So anybody else in the world, they spend two hundred bucks and get a basketball hoop, and that would be used exponentially more, but they don't think that way. It looked as if it was a channel of graft for the crazy paintings that are horrible and serve no purpose. They removed all our benches. They have a hot room, so you cannot have bedbugs brought in, but they didn't tell me about when I moved in. I waited six months to use it, and they finally said, you can only use it when you move in. So if someone gets a used mattress or a used sofa, and they want to toast it before they bring it in, that's not allowed. So you have these amenities like the hot room, and they're not used. We have these so-called wraparound services, which are close to worthless from my perspective. I might be nuts and not be aware of it, but the one service I got recently was, because I'm being evicted, they had five of these service workers gather to assist me in finding housing, and three of them looked at their phones while one guy filled out the thing, and the other guy kicked in occasionally for about an hour. I'm assuming they all billed two hours to get there and get psyched and, and run through it. But it became evident within the first ten questions that they were specialists in housing the mentally ill. And again, you never know if you're mentally ill because you're mentally ill. But I've been through the same thing with Caminar ten years ago, and they said, we can only house the, the worst case that we have to keep them from dying, nothing else. What that exemplifies is the extent to which you have people processing applicants when there's no openings. And, and there's a lot of churning of the bureaucratic, bureaucratic red tape and that sort of thing, but there's no nuts and bolts or action on the ground that can actually accommodate and solve the problem. And that's been my experience with some of the agencies I'm marginally involved in. And, and we have a garden there also. There's probably a five hundred thousand dollar garden. The soil, it could not be worse. The layout's horrible, but the worst thing is, although it is the heart of the community to have people gardening, people walking in and out, schmoozing, getting acquainted, they shut us down. They ripped out all my fava plants that were like four feet high and packed with food, thirty feet of them, the day before we harvested them. Time. Because they were unsightly. And the tomatoes, they cut them from seven feet down to two feet, because it's unsightly. So the garden is now barren and full of weeds for the last eight months. And that's wraparound services, mismanaged. Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve S. Steve S., followed by Jennifer S., and then Ethan Hart.
Good evening. Before I start, I just want to say with the Navigation Center and Broadway Project coming on soon, we've got more than enough beds for people that are willing to take help. We don't need to, I'm sorry, we don't need to have $176,000 to tell us another report that'll sit on a shelf after 30 minutes. So I'm going to start with, on this April 1st, don't prank Vallejo by backsliding on the encampment clearings. Vallejo has made real progress over the last few years. We've seen improvement in security and the issues that come with the encampments. The mayor and the city council members were elected to bring change. Now is the time to act with urgency and make smart decisive decisions to help lift Vallejo out of this dark period. My name is Steve Seidel. I'm speaking as a Vallejo Heights resident and not as a Vallejo Heights Neighborhood Association Board Member. Our neighborhood, through the VHNA, has worked tirelessly to keep our streets safe and clean. We organize monthly trash cleanups. We work with the city to fix the streetlights on Wilson. We work with the GVRD to keep River Park clean. And we started a neighborhood watch program that my wife and I are captains of that is expanding across our neighborhood. We're making a difference the only way we know how. We need your help. We've seen the difference the encampment clearings make. Crime, trash, and the other nonsense, nonsense that goes down since the clearing of the, has gone down since the clearing of the encampments at Austin Creek, at White Slough, at River Park, at the Redwood Tracks, and other small encampments in District Four. These encircle our neighborhood. We're wrestling our streets and parks back and don't want to lose them again. It took a long time to get where we are. We're asking you, our city leaders, to keep the momentum going. Help us keep faith in Vallejo's future by continuing encampment clearings and working toward revitalization of the city. Add to and continue to provide the best services that the city can afford to the unhoused that avail themselves of these services, and stop enabling those that don't accept them. Hey, I didn't stop when you were talking, okay? If you, if you think the problem is difficult today, imagine what happens when words continue, word continues to spread that Vallejo is a safe haven for unchecked encampments. Stopping the encampment clearings will encourage the problem to grow and make it harder in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer S., then Ethan Hart, and Paula Connolly.
Hi. My name's Jennifer S., and as far as solutions go, you know, it's a little bit above my pay grade, but the best that I know how to offer is things that obviously we can try to afford. And some of those things are, if, if faith-based churches, things like that can help. There, San Francisco had the homebound type where they would try to connect family or friends or people that know someone and get them connected again with people that could be a support system. I know that's not going to help everyone, but even if it's a 10%, that's something. So with that said, though, in the meantime, I am still in support of clearing encampments, and here is why. In the short amount of time that we have halted, the halt has already been covered by many news articles. The information spreads fast, and this is just within two weeks that it was announced. And the other cities and counties are not doing the same. The, the halts now just equate invites. And it's a serious implication for us, on all levels. The unhoused that are here already are, will have to compete for services as the unhoused from other cities and counties see Vallejo as a safe place to come. None of us can handle that. It also has legal consequences. As more settle here, we risk more lawsuits for those that would oppose the clearings. Current legal cases are hoping to set precedents, and others in similar circumstances can find opportunity here. Housed residents and business owners with empathy fatigue make up a significant portion who support clearings. Many will not speak up, but they will voice their concerns one-on-one, away from the shame game. Online, they won't go to the, the online, you know, formats. They won't come here. As leaders, if you're fortunate enough, they will show their frustration through emails, you know, calls, surveys. And then others were just going to leave. They'll leave Vallejo without saying a word. And so you may not even hear from many Vallejohans. You will just notice that the defeated vibe or quiet, quiet void as people just leave, taking with them their property income, their sales income, and in the hopes for something better. And I know that the city has a big heart, but wanting what's best and knowing what's best can be in direct conflict. We need to do what's right now versus what we need to work toward. We can do both, but it's not going to be easy. And I know you guys are in a rock and a hard place situation here. This is, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. But we need to continue the clearings while we work on bolstering outreach and resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ethan Hart, followed by Paula Connolly, and then Yannick Phillips.
Hello. My name's Ethan, and over the past four days, I've been conducting a public survey to gather input on the decision set to be made here today. Should Vallejo continue or stop clearing encampments? I fully understand that the solution to this complex issue is not as binary as this question suggests, but this is the immediate policy decision currently under consideration. I launched the survey because this issue, with issues like this, where stakes are high and the impacts are deeply personal, we often hear from the most passionate voices in the room. That passion matters, but it can also be intimidating and may not always reflect the broader community. The survey was shared widely on social media and through neighborhood association leaders in an effort to reach as many Vallejo residents as possible within the limited time available. Whatever you decide here today, it will have a real and lasting impact on people's lives, both housed and unhoused. The survey aims to make that decision as informed as possible. Here are the results. 300 people responded to the survey. 294 of them are Vallejo residents. When asked whether the city should continue clearing encampments, 240 people, or 80% said yes, the city should continue. 60 people, or 20%, said no, the city should stop. The survey included an optional field to explain their reasoning. 259 written comments were submitted, offering a wide range of perspectives and solutions. I strongly encourage the council to review these responses. You should all have a packet with two packets, one for those that want clearings to continue and one that want, for those that want them to stop. I hope that this input will guide your decision-making as you tackle this incredibly difficult issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Connolly, followed by Yannick Phillips, and then Barbara Gaye.
Good evening. I would like to focus on downtown, the place our council has touted as the focus of revitalization and economic uplift for years. Homeless advocates continue to push the unhoused to our civic center to keep the focus of their fixation front and center. It is not the appropriate place for showers, or food lines, or illegal camping. It has been confirmed there's no need to use the excuse of public transit as a reason to keep them there either. Have any of you ever had a small business? Small businesses put everything they have into it. There is no grant money or federal bailout if it fails. Small business owners are never off work. Things like broken windows, theft, fires, people using their doorway as a toilet, and the loitering of mentally ill or drug-addicted individuals make it impossible to succeed when margins are already slim. They need support, and I'm not talking about money. They need clean and safe streets. Instead, you are asking businesses to be mired in the negative effects of encampments while promoting shop Vallejo. Many on our council and county promote Housing First as a solution to encampments. Housing First is a failure. Keeps the homeless in the system and draws others to it. The premise of putting a roof over someone's head alone, and they will get off drugs and reclaim their mental health, is false. Housing First has had no effect at improving substance abuse, and up to 75% of homeless have substance or mental health issues or both. The question is what's happening to our city. The city of Vacaville has had several subsidized housing projects denied by the county to send money to Vallejo. This may sound good, but it sets up Vallejo to be the homeless hub of Solano County. Other cities need to share the burden in our county. The Vacaville Homeless Outreach Team Crew spent $73,000 on cleanups last year compared to Ms. Peterson's report. So I don't think we really know accurately what the cost of cleanup is in this city, because salaries should not have been included in that. And again, why do Vallejo citizens have to do a deep dive into an issue to get all of the facts? Why is our council and county, city staff pushing programs that are shown to fail? The county sees money for Vallejo for the homeless, but that will only entrench this issue in a city desperate for economic growth. We don't want our city to be a homeless sanctuary city. Any solutions depend on the money that our city actually has in a deficit looming. Continue to follow the state law. Continue to clean up our city while looking for more solutions. We must become more economically successful and not be the city of the destitute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yannick Phillips, followed by Barbara Gaye, and then Tom Carey.
You did say Yannick Phillips? Okay. Hello, council and mayor. My name is Yannick Phillips, and I live near River Park. My boyfriend and I moved to Vallejo two weeks before the pandemic lockdown, and was, and we were shocked by the number of unhoused individuals. Despite COVID challenges, I felt compelled to help, and for a year, I served free coffee, hot chocolate out of the back of my truck, collected clothes, food, tents, sleeping bags, and much more for those unhoused gathered on Georgia Street near the library. Through this, I met and connected with a lot of unhoused individuals, such as Susan, a retired ICU nurse, and her dog Taliesin, and Jason, and several others. I witnessed local church members bring hot meals to them. But over time, something began to shift. The encampments spread, the garbage piled up, crime rose, the unhoused friends began to move away. And with all of that, for safety reasons, I gradually stopped leaving my house, except when absolutely necessary. Tonight, I want to mention two things. First, I want to address a specific group of unhoused individuals, people like Susan and Jason. These are individuals who, despite their circumstances, have actively sought help. I respect that. Second, I want to mention an issue affecting our personal property and my neighborhood. Recently, we discovered an unhoused man squatting with his trailer, extension cords, and three German Shepherds on our shared private fire safety easement, who has unfettered access to our hillside lot that I can no longer access safely because of him and his dogs. And yet, if I don't maintain it for fire safety, we will be cited and fined. Our backyard, once a place of peace and joy, now feels unsafe. I feel like a hostage in my own home. Code Enforcement did call me today, and this gentleman is being cited for zoning violations. But it could take months before he's gone, and our neighbors and I are losing our empathy and patience as fast as our quality of life is deteriorating. My adult children from Sonoma do not want to come and visit me. Neither does my granddaughter. I ask you, Mayor, City Council, to demand leadership action from our county, Governor Newsom, and from our federal government. As well-intentioned as they are, churches, community groups, and individuals like myself are only Band-Aids. The time for Band-Aids is over. We need long-term solutions that have been used successfully in other cities that puts people like Susan and Jason and others, as well as the safety of our communities first. We have your back on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Gaye, followed by Tom Carey, and then Andreas Schmidt.
Barbara, we called you. Yep.
Okay. Hi, Barbara Gaye, 30-year homeowner. I used to come to a lot of these meetings. I'm, I have two minutes, yikes. And I got so burned out because what I saw over the years was just study, 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 and very little movement. Got real involved in the liquid natural gas, in the cement plant, in the police department. It just study, study. So I came up with my true sense, and council members who asked for solutions, well, this is overwhelming and heartbreaking. But my true sense is, my first reaction to all this was like a lot of people, how can you do sweeps when there's no place for them to go? People are moved, moved on, moved around. But it's so complicated. I can see, I agree with everybody on both sides. And it's actually showed up in my front yard. There's been some people helping with a project in the back where I realized were homeless, and I've tried to help them, and they didn't want the help. Some of them were severely mentally ill. We've just got to find some way. I'm not holding my breath in this administration to get more money for the severely mentally ill. I know there are not a lot of them, but it's, there's, there's so many different groups. There's those who want services and don't, but you can't do sweeps unless they have someplace to go. You've got to stop studying, 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 and move. Pick your best actions and do something. You've got, they've got, got place to go to with at least a bare minimum of services, like bathrooms and like a lot of the stuff that Ann Carr said. Okay. My passion project, as quickly as possible, has been, there's these two groups, seniors struggling to survive, both financially and emotionally, and the unhoused, and they're growing and growing and growing. And my concept is to bring them together. Junior ADUs is mutual survival solutions. I've had an ADU in my house, and I'm working on another one. It saved my life financially, but I didn't expect emotionally, because I'm one of these growing more and more socially isolated. People move away. I won't go into all that. There's no time. But it has literally saved my life. And I created a whole program, and I just couldn't finish it. I gave it to Leat Meitz and Homer, but, but someone should be, I even wrote the whole job description out, assigned to bring those two groups together, to match appropriate, the house that do want services, with seniors who can maybe create a part of their house. It used to be called a granny unit or in-law unit with not a whole lot of expense. Of course, the ideal is tiny homes and all that, but permitting is just a nightmare. Takes forever, and it costs way too much. So junior ADUs, I think, is the way to go. Taking part of one's house, garage conversions, a lot of split levels in-house. A lot of people are already doing that, but they need help, and they need help bringing the two groups together. I went to Housing Authority, and they don't even, you know, provide home hosts. I don't consider myself a landlady. I'm thinking of it as a home host. I hate that word. They don't, they're no help at all bringing people together. Someone needs to be the matchmaker who knows a lot about both issues and can bring these two groups who are just growing in numbers. You know, just one more thing. How many seniors can afford $6,000 to $8,000 a month for a retirement community?
Time.
My food's doubled, all the utilities, homeowners, everything has doubled. I can't afford to stay in my home anymore, even though I paid it off 10 years ago. I need someone in like a granny unit. But someone has to help make it happen. Make some decisions. Stop studying everything to death and do stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Tom Carey, followed by Andreas Schmidt, and then Linda Manstout.
Well, I hear the council talking about how we need to all work together. And honestly, today I hear from a neighbor that our mayor was working on forming a homeless union two years before she got elected here. And when we met with our mayor in my backyard with 10 neighbors, we didn't hear boo about the homeless union from Andrea Soros. So I'm a little skeptical about working together with the council when we have this kind of dishonesty from our mayor to start, okay? I think some of our council want the homeless on the streets, and some are just going along with whoever's pushing. I want the homeless to get help, and I want them off the streets and out of the parks. Help them get off the streets, okay? Don't enable them to stay in the tents and camps. It's gone on long enough. We have all sorts of nonprofits and agencies to help these people. Get them off the streets. It's not fair to the residents, the citizens, the taxpayers, the business people. It's not fair. Do you enjoy seeing trash all over Vallejo? Do you appreciate some homeless person shitting on your property like happened to me? Do you feel good when a crazy street person? Do you feel good when a crazy street person is raving in the wee hours of the night in your neighborhood? Maybe it doesn't happen in Glen Cove. Do you enjoy the late-night screaming matches we hear in the middle of the night? Is a huge encampment facing the ferry dock something you're proud of? I, I don't understand it. I do not understand it. Should volunteers be cleaning up encampments, or should you? You're responsible for it when you put a pause on the sweeps. Do you feel any guilt when our Public Works has to do your dirty work? If you didn't allow camps, they wouldn't have to clean up. My sense is that you have some very progressive council members. Do you see the irony in permitting the pollution of our environment by the unhoused? Tell them to stop, mayor. Tell them to stop. That's your job.
Your time is up anyway, but I will ask the members of the audience-
I got another minute like everybody else.
You can go on until the three minutes. I will ask, I will ask the members of the audience, though, to please be respectful and not shout out during other speakers.
Various charities who expect their taxes to go to improvements, not the normalization of squalor. Get these people off the streets for their sakes and ours. Stop enabling and excusing homelessness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear Andreas Schmidt, followed by Linda Manstout, and then Nathan Stout. So Andreas Schmidt.
All right. Thanks for having us, City Council. We appreciate this moment. I live in District Four as well, and of course, we're impacted by these encampments maybe more than most. But I think, you know, as I was sitting here trying to say, think of what I might make an impact by saying, I kind of went through my day. You know, I walk my dogs every morning, and I walk through the streets, I walk from River Park into downtown, have a cup of coffee and walk back. And there's not one day, I'm not impacted by what I'm seeing. Whether it be somebody in, camping in Central Park in a motorhome with dogs off the leash, coming after my husband here. He had to pepper spray the dogs, and then the folks wanted to beat him up. He had to run away. This is an everyday thing that we see. And, you know, I have as much compassion for people that are unhoused as anyone. I worked with people with disabilities all of my life. I know what that, that feels like, the gentleman that said, people looking down on them and all of those things. I totally, my heart is torn out. What does bother me the most, though, is folks who can't follow the law. These folks, you just simply feel unsafe. And I've heard so many people with their own experiences, being beat up, this, that, another thing. It wasn't long ago, I think it was last year, with the former mayor happened to be having dinner, and a woman who was part of the party came in and said, "I was just mugged. The guy wanted to shoot my head off, and I gave him 40 bucks, and he went away." And she had a straight face. I, I was just like, okay. Vallejo is a joke. We all know it. Everybody knows it. You know, places or businesses won't come here for the very reason that we're trying to explain tonight. Whether it be the dirt and the trash, or just the criminality that we see. And the white slew absolutely has to be cleaned. We know it will be cleaned, and it will cost millions of dollars, and we will all pay for it. Get on it. In my opinion, this is like a four-alarm fire. Anytime there is a encampment starting, people should be there. What's going on? Get those folks reorganized, back in line, getting them services, whatever they need, but try not to allow these things to mushroom like they have. The white slew is a huge issue there. Folks there are doing things completely illegal. We don't know what. I've heard over and over, workers won't go there without police. That makes it very strange to me. It's like, if people wouldn't come into my neighborhood without police, there would seem to be a problem. But it seems people are ignoring that issue there. So I really strongly urge you, get on it, get it cleaned up. Work with those folks as a community. Move them as a community. That's what people want. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Manstout, followed by Nathan Stout, and then David Campell.
District Four Vallejo feels like a gladiatorial sport, where you unleash the lions on a public unable to defend itself. Violent, psychotic, and drug-filled felons armed with fists, baseball bats, knives, and machetes, along with drug dealers and arsonists are allowed to run free. You have allowed our neighborhoods to be overrun with fire, squalor, abandonment, and neglect. The sweeps had gone a long way to quell the mayhem, and of course, your first order of business is to stop the sweeps. You needed an excuse to circumvent the law, and you used an unfortunate death as a justification. How crass. Regarding the homeless, 70% have criminal records, 60% addiction, addiction issues. Only 15% are employed, sometimes only sporadically. Up to 80% turn down services or shelter. The county needs somewhere to send its ex-felons, many homeless. You may have not been here, but a decade ago, Solano Realignment designated Vallejo as a one-stop destination for early-release felons. We were told Vallejo is poor, has cheap housing, all the ex-cons' friends and associates live in Vallejo, in West Vallejo. We have been the chambermaid to the county for a long time. The current elected seem to be working members of the same old cabal. Encampments give the county and their Vallejo City Council friends the excuse to chase funding. This rewards the network. More resources will justify more homeless to be directed to Vallejo. Nobody in power wants to put a cap on the pipeline. Cronies at the county, at the county level get paid off and reelected because they protect up county. We are sacrificed. This has got to stop. You have made hard-working, tax-paying residents collateral damage. Our quality of life is non-existent, and the city council is hard at work perpetuating a ruin. The destruction of our historic neighborhoods, the ruin of our historic but rotting downtown. D4 is your containment zone, so of course, your supporters, gaslight and shameless. It serves them and keeps their neighborhoods and families safe while sacrificing ours. Your most important allies appear to be the advocates, providers, and attorneys now flocking to Vallejo to do your bidding, to take advantage of our city. You hold hearings and toss us to the lines. You won't even stop the intimidation and harassment of the public in the chambers by your supporters. You throw us to the wolves without apology. During your campaigns, you pitched yourself as a change from the status quo. You delivered, you are the status quo one steroids.
Thank you.
Nathan Stout, followed, Nathan Stout, followed by David Campell, and then Sean M., please.
Hello, mayor and city council. I'm here tonight to ask you to please keep clearing the encampments. I have lived in Vallejo, in St. Vincent's Hill, for 14 years. I was president of my neighborhood association for over five years. I also served on the General Plan Working Group and Housing and Community Development Commission. As a General Plan Working Group member, I helped draft the document that is supposed to guide this city for the next 20 years. The General Plan defines the direction of the city. Nothing in this document allowed for homeless encampments in our downtown or civic center. Our hope was that a policy of economic development and investment in our community would revitalize the downtown. When the General Plan did address homelessness, it did so in ways that did not put our economic development at risk. This is why the Navigation Center, also in D4, is located in a somewhat industrial neighborhood. Sacrificing our waterfront gateway to our city would be unthinkable. Georgia Street is too important a thoroughfare to allow the unhoused to dominate the area with an illegal encampment. I don't understand why District Four in Vallejo has to be sacrificed so that your own neighborhoods can be safe. Why is my neighbor, my neighborhood, the one to lose neighbors? Why are my neighbors afraid to live here anymore? I look at you, and I look at our civic spaces, and I am sorry to say it, but I have little faith in your ability to make decisions that will positively impact my life. You all live in different neighborhoods that don't have encampments, and you directly benefit from keeping encampments in my neighborhood. Vallejo, and particularly District Four, has been a dumping ground and containment zone for the surrounding communities. We suffer so that you don't have to. You cannot see the bigger picture, that this is a city of 123,000 people. A sanctuary city for homeless for Vallejo is a bad idea. Over and over again, different cities have shown that supporting homeless is unsustainable and doesn't actually solve anything. It's a bottomless pit that creates a downward spiral of blight and poverty. We can no longer afford to sacrifice our public spaces to the illegal encampments of a small number of people who care nothing for the betterment of our city. I also want to say that the person in the back who's heckling everyone, he campaigned with you. So if you can't control him, you really need to do something about that.
All right, thank you.
David Camp, David Campell, followed by Sean M., and then Dignity for All.
I'm not sure this thing goes along enough. They're dirty. They smell. They're drug addicts. They stink. We need to get rid of them. Them. We other the unhoused. They're not us. They're them. And we need to get rid of them. Rather than looking for solutions, it's not up to city star, Governor Newsom, without an E, or anyone else, except the homeless themselves, to start the process. The unhoused need to tell us, or we need to listen to them, what do they think is going to solve their problem? They don't want to be on the street. You've heard that from people today. They do not want to be there. And solutions imposed from above will keep them there, because they will not answer the needs of the people that are being affected. So please, talk to them. They are not others, they are us. And remember, there but for fortune, go you and I. Thank you. By the way, I'm the heckler, and I never worked on her campaign.
Thank you.
Sean M., followed by Dignity for All, and then Jared Bundy.
Mayor, council, hi, hello again. Okay, so, solutions, yes. First, let me just join my big sister Jean in saying, housing first. It's got to be housing first, and a pivot 180 from this sweep-first mentality. I'll tell you why. Five years ago, we had unhoused in our neighborhood, on our block, alongside our house, and we decided to go out there and feed people, and bring harm-reduction supplies, and bring whatever supplies we could. And that was our way of addressing this issue. Now, I'm just stating for the record what we all already know. Many will applaud the Solano County Sheriff being more present here, but we also know that that means a three-percenter enthusiast sheriff, working with the unhoused, working as the homeless outreach, a three-percenter enthusiast. We all know this, right? But I will tell you this, after five years, working closely with the unhoused, listening to them, listening to the union, listening to their, what they need on their terms, under no circumstances would I be interred. Under no circumstances would I go somewhere with a curfew, away from my companion animal, separated by gender. Under no circumstances would I go into this internment process, which is why I say, I am refusing this dehumanizing language. I'm refusing this notion that, oh, it's not being accepted. There's no way in hell I would accept that. And the solution, if you want a solution, is housing. Housing first, housing always, and no internment, and end the sweeps. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dignity for All, followed by Jared Bundy, and then Aztlan Native.
My second time here. You know what? First of all, I think in many ways, they're making chumps out of all of us, all sides, by the way. Oh, they're making chumps out of all of us, in a way. Politicians in general, I'm sorry. I've been a voter, I'm in my 40s, I've been a longtime resident of California, even the Bay Area for a while. I come from another V-city, Ventura, California, and there's a lot of NIMBY attitudes that're not in my backyard. But guess what? A lot of those unhoused are your own kids. You born, some of you, some of you born, especially in the 40s and 50s, like my parents, who are immigrants, had affordability and affordable mortgages. Go watch The Big Short. You know, they're making chumps out, whether Democrats or Republicans, even in the top, they're making chumps out of all of us. Things don't have to cost as much as they're saying. Where is the money going? I, even myself, I don't even do drugs. I was trying to be a student, working hard like everyone else. I know workers right now, my own IHSS worker, lost her main job, and she is in threat of being on the street, too. And they've been work, we've been working our ass off for years. They're making chumps out of all of us. The point is, is that whoever is getting the money, even some of these charities, are a joke, some of them. Nothing about us, without us, whether for disability, for poverty. Homefulness is a group that helps a lot of people. There's many people, you have to ask us. You could even hire us. You need to give more incentives. There's, the reason that people end up on the street is because we have no hope. I even was got told by 211, just a few years ago, when I was going through crisis and was going to end up homeless, that unless I was on drugs or just out of jail, they wouldn't help me. And even those that are on drugs, they don't want to help. They put us in SROs, overpriced boarding cares, and shelters that kick you out in the morning, and no wonder you end up back on the street. Bulldozers kill people, all right? Bulldozers do not need to be used to clean up encampments. If you want to clean up, work with the people to clean up the trash. And like a gentleman said, there's a lot of house people that are also dumping their trash and sites and blaming it on the unhoused, and that's not fair. Imagine if you could, you're working, you know, 20, 40 hours a week. I know computer programmers in freaking shelters right now, even in Oakland. I went up to one and asked them to even let me in, and we get the runaround of what's going on. So even when we do ask for help, they don't freaking help us. No wonder I'm pissed off from Gaza to here, stop torturing oppressed people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jared Bundy, followed by Aztlan Native, and then the tiny Pavarazzi Gola.
And how many, how many more in-person speakers do we have?
We have a total of 14, including this speaker.
14 more. I may have us take a recess in a few minutes. I'm going to kind of look around. I think we may need one. So let's do these next few speakers that you just called, and then we'll take a short recess. All right, thanks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you.
You can raise it up, too, if you want, on the, there's a toggle on your right. There it is.
Thank you for your time this evening. I don't envy the position of any of you, because this is a really impassioned item that, from, from my perspective, doesn't have a great solution. One of the things that I'd like to highlight is about 10 years ago, when the Navigation Center model was developed in San Francisco, that model was developed largely to address the issue of encampments. What they saw is that there was social cohesion within encampments, and it was much easier to move a cohort of people collectively together towards something than to do it as individual piecemeal. So one of the things that I would implore the council is to really look at getting the Navigation Center open so that encampments can be worked with as a community to find alternative housing solutions. Also, I'm vastly in agreement with Ms. Carr as well. I think that safe parking is a reasonable second option for the city to look at. If we look at about a quarter of the population as residing in vehicles, it seems like it's also one of the more economical options that was presented this evening. And I'll leave it at that for other folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oz- Azlan Native, and then Tiny Pavarat Scola. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing the last name.
Good evening. So yeah, this is stolen land anyways, why not use some of the vacant land to house the God bless your hearts. If you're a politrickster, just know that there are no April Fools here. We need house keys, not handcuffs. How about sanctuaries, not sweeps? Our roof is the sky when we're lying there in our sleep. We have no place to go, so we camping out in the street. I'm the voice for my bro that was killed during your sweep. Now governors and politricksters act like they don't see. The real root of the problem, is it hear you? Is it you hear, or is it me? I know you hear me, but are you listening? You talking about it, but you whispering, talking about us without us. It's our demands, your dismissal. We have solutions, you hating them? Do you know what self-determination is? You turn a blind eye, now that's racism, a high form of discrimination. Humanitarian rights now. You know how quick we can turn the lights out? I don't think you do, because if you did, I think you would do something like right now. We have a place called Homefulness, a poor people's solution to homelessness, that will end this crisis that politicians can't seem to see how wrong this is. My bro was killed by a bulldozer, and you know his name, it was James Oakley. We came all the way here from East Oakland to the Valley Joe 'cause our hearts broken. Justice for James Edward Oakley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker before the break is Tiny Pavarat Scola. I hope that's how you pronounce your last name.
James Edward Oakley, say his name. James Edward Oakley, say his name. So, I'm a poverty scholar. That houseless mama, that houseless daughter, all those people they don't want to see, never want to be, look away from we, what you gonna do? Vallejo, arrest we? We're in your city. I was houseless when my mama started when I was 11 years old. And unfortunately, poverty doesn't end with a politrickster solution, or a non-profiter, or a charity crumb. It ends with our self-determination. My brother Heda, as you just heard, is one of the warriors and the leaders, houseless leaders of homefulness, is happening. Homefulness isn't just a cute word. It's something me and my mama dreamed in those streets, in those hoopdees, in those doorways, when we were houseless throughout most and all of my childhood. Later on in life, I was evicted with my son because of a $700 rent increase overnight because of gentrification. We know there are many reasons we end up on the street. So anybody in this audience who called us drug users and mentally ill and all of these things is, needs to point the finger back to them. Because just like housed people, we struggle with substance use, with mental struggles, and we struggle with the financial impossibility of surviving in capitalism, with the lie of rent, when you don't have enough to pay it. Me and Ma were on the street because my mom didn't have enough, because she was disabled and she could not continue to work. That was it. Most of the folks on the street are gravely disabled, as you saw from some of our relatives at the homeless, Vallejo Homeless Union. Elders, disabled, they're your grandmamas, they're your aunties, they're your grandpas. They're not the other. They're humans, and we all are humans. So let's stop objectifying us just because we are outside. Finally, I dealt with chronic homelessness most of my life because of this system and my own trauma from living through my life, not because of anything else. The reality is, I am only housed because of homefulness. Navigation centers do not work, Mayor, and I appreciate all of the words and the, and the energy tonight of letting us speak. I appreciate that. But I do want to say that all of those solutions on that board are not informed or created by poor and houseless people. Poor and houseless people are here with solutions. Poor Magazine has solutions, we're doing it. 23 houseless youth, adults, and elders are permanently housed.
23 thousand.
That's right. In rent-free forever homes. So I want to recognize and let all these people know that there are solutions. There's Tent City, 3 and 4 in occupied Duwamish Territory, AKA Seattle. It houses over 350 people in a sanctuary community. There are solutions, family, but they are not what came up on that slide. You need to talk to us. Vallejo Homeless Union, listen to them. Oh, Amadeo.
All right, thank you. Sir, we're gonna, is that next on the list? I think we're gonna, we're gonna take a break really quickly, a recess, since we've been at it for a little bit, and then...
Let him rock and clap. No, he's a houseless elder, please let him speak.
We'll definitely let him speak. Did he, is he signed up online? Is he the next, is he the next item? We can go, we can go ahead and take you now, if you're not, you're next on the list.
I thank the city of Vallejo. I'm from a Bay boy. I grew old here, I'm 70. I grew old here, coming through Vallejo 65 years ago. Every time Lake Berry has to clear lake, all the time, this is, this is a part of me. I love this city, I always appreciate this city. I thought I was gonna be the first one to mention James Oakley, James Ed Oakley, but my companions mentioning first. I'm against caterpillar, should change its name, from caterpillar to butterfly, to have $350,000 per sweep. My car was taken in a sweep, my birth certificate, everything, by the city of Oakland. A sweep, a car that moved away from them all the time. $350,000, and you guys have, I have other names for them, but officer on duty, on duty, and a man was ran over by something that turns from a caterpillar to a butterfly. It shouldn't even be a bulldozer killing him. You guys need to address your ways of sweeping, of sweeping people. And here he is, in his 20 minutes before he was ran over by this bulldozer, he had addressed him in bright orange uniform. Let it be said, I'm here from, I'm a Bay boy. All of us are Bay people. Some of us are immigrants from other places, but we all are Bay people. It is embarrassing. I lived on the street for 20 years. Homefulness is trying to change me. The outside, when you go out this roof, that's my roof, that outside, that blue sky. I trust no one, okay? I grew old here. I'm from Lakeport, Vallejo, the Bay, everywhere. Let's not have bulldozers kill anyone else. Say it loud, let them know, because I'm gonna address the bulldozer caterpillar thing. It is embarrassing that I have to come and stand in front of my Vallejo companions and mention that an officer on duty, sweeping something that, they just took my car. I had cans on it as high as the ceiling. They took my car. What was I gonna do from there? I ran from them, they knew me, I'm a Bay boy. They come, I go. But they swept me, they took my birth certificate, they took my mother's death certificate. Okay? Where you think my bathroom's gonna be?
All right, thank you. All right, with that, I'm gonna suggest a recess. We usually try for five minutes and end up for 10, so let's do that, and we'll, we'll start no later than 9:25.
All right, now I'm really going to enforce it. We need to start again. We definitely needed the recess, but we have more speakers and I don't want to keep them waiting. And while the, while the other council members come in, I'm going to quickly reset with the audience. I think we've been, at the last meeting in at this one, we've done a pretty good job of giving everybody in and being heard and kind of building community together. I have gotten a couple of comments about the heckling. I am reluctant to, I, I try to balance it out and I don't want to interrupt a speaker, but I will if it's distracting to them. So I'm just going to ask that everyone, please be mindful. The noise really does carry in this room. It's distracting to the speaker. We do need to make sure everybody gets their chance to say their piece for their time. So please just refrain from whatever noises you want to make in response to someone. I would ask you to keep it to yourself out of respect for, for our speakers. So with that, I think we're just missing Councilmember Lettis Yu and I, I just saw her. She's, yeah, she's in the back. So I'm, I think, well, let's go ahead and, there she is. Let's go ahead and start with our next few speakers.
Okay, our first speaker is Gordon Gilmore, followed by Kimberly Christensen, and then Jose Carizales.
Can you all hear me all right? Excellent. My name is Gordon Gilmore. I'm with the Berkeley Homeless Union. And like the Vallejo Homeless Union, we're looking for collaborative solutions. And that's why I'm here tonight, to speak to a potential for a collaborative solution. A lot of this discussion of the, like egregious amounts of money and old costs distract from the fact that we're talking about sweeps fundamentally. And in Berkeley, we've had success with the voluntary cleanups, where the public works comes in and they coordinate with the Berkeley Homeless Union in order to throw away items that are trash and allow people to keep their personal possessions and such as their documents and what have you that get thrown away. They're less expensive than sweeps, which don't end up doing anything aside from harming the unhoused and harming the city workers that have to perform them. We've received positive feedback from the surrounding businesses in the area and the surrounding community members, appreciative for the approach that we're taking with these collaborations. And I, I want to say that Eli and Sean are here and they're willing to work with y'all and they've said that they're happy to help with these types of voluntary community cleanups. If you're able to put them in connection with public works, then you could find a more humane approach to keeping the community clean. For, not only for the housed folks, for the unhoused folks too, who don't want to live in squalor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly Christensen, followed by Jose Carizales, and then Marissa S.
Hi, my name is Kimberly. I'm from Vallejo. I raised my four children here. Also, my three grandchildren live here and I love Vallejo. My daughter, who now lives in New Jersey, came to visit last week and we went to the waterfront to take the ferry. She saw the encampments up from the ferry parking lot and said, oh my God, what's all that garbage? And I said, that's a homeless encampment. It is embarrassing. It is a disaster and I don't appreciate our town being trashed like this. And they build fires wherever they want. I see that all over town. My grandchildren and myself have been volunteering for the Vallejo Watershed Alliance for a few, few years now. We have cleaned up abandoned encampments at Dan Foley, Hans Park, Rindler Creek, Lake Dawig, and Lake Dawig. We did coastal cleanup two years in a row behind Eco Thrift at the White Slough. Unbelievable what we saw and cleaned up, including syringes at each site. I think the people causing this should be cited for littering and be made to do community cleanups themselves if they cannot pay littering fines. Something needs to be done because our town and waterways are suffering. A, a solution also could be that people need to get together and share rents. I have roommates, I currently rent and I have roommates because I cannot not afford to rent by myself. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jose, Jose Carizales, then Melissa S., and then the people.
First of all, I have great respect for our mayor and thank you for running. I just want to tell you a little story about the, my life experience. My father immigrated from Mexico, joined the army, fought in the Battle of the Bulge. He told me this little story. As he was in the army, he faced racism, very much judgmental. During his leave, when he came back from leave, he went to his barracks and he got there a day early. A superior officer told him to get up and do something. He refused. Why? Because he knew it was the right thing to do. Because he, the superior officer had no power over him that because he came in a day early. That's the lesson that I have with me for the rest of my life. He told me that story when I was a young, eight, nine, 10-year-old boy. Out of his five sons and one daughter, we know that story. So how do I translate that to here? You have a very difficult decision. I get it. I've been here in this side of the aisle for the last 10 years. I have to change my whole speech because of that. And I thought of my dad. As I sat, as I slept back there next to the library, I thought of my dad and that story he told me. He did what he did because it was the right thing to do. What will this council do? The right thing to do. What is it? To treat a human being, no matter what status in life that they are, to be non-judgmental, to be respectful to that person, and to treat them humanely. My unsheltered friends told you story after story. I've heard it for the last 10 years. 2014, April 28th, at about 6:00 PM, 6:30 is my first minute, second of being unsheltered here in the city of Vallejo. I get, I get it. Show compassion, show empathy. I know you understand the issue. I know the issue is in front of you. But my unsheltered friends need to be, deserve and have earned the right to be treated fairly and with respect and with dignity. And may God's greatest blessings be with Mr. James Oakley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marissa S., followed by the people, and then Josie McCracken.
Hi, my name is Marissa. I serve on Human Relations Commission. I also volunteer every time there's a warming center. And I just want to say for the record, Natalie, I've watched you put in so much extra hours and time and even, people don't give you enough credit and I, I just want you to know that I see it and I'm, I give you props for, for what, what you are trying to do. It's a hard job. I will say that my son's father, I have a son that's 13. His father was found in a tent in October 22nd of 2022. He'd, he'd been passed for five days. It took five days to find him. He locked himself in the tent. So I'm here not just for the housed, I'm myself and unhoused. I fortunately have been able to stay in a hotel. My, I went to North Hills. I graduated from a private school. I had just had an unfortunate circumstance with a crappy landlord. And it's, it's hard to put together a first month's rent deposit. They require a lot. My credit's okay, you know, I'm working on it, but it's just hard for, even for someone in my situation. I, you know, I, these are my people. That's how I consider it, you know? Just going to give you two stories. I, my son's best friend is a little girl. She lived in a tent right here at the library and that was the first time I ever came to a city council meeting because I was so upset that an 11-year-old, you had to walk past an 11-year-old's tent to come to this meeting, you know? No 11-year-old should be sleeping in a tent. I'll also give you another story of, of a young man who, he's now 18. He's battling for his life in the hospital. He grew up at the Red Roof. When he was 18, his mom got kicked out. He said, what am I going to do, Marissa? I don't even know how to read. And he tried to rob somebody and got shot at City Park just a couple months ago. And it, it breaks my heart because he didn't, he doesn't want this. He didn't want to do that. But these, these kids out here are just trying to survive. As a mother, I'll do whatever I have to do to feed my children, you know? Don't get me wrong, I, I'm not saying anything illegal, but I know that there are people, if you have to, people are going to go into Walmart and steal some food to feed their children, you know, unfortunately. And that's where the cycle begins. When you go into, when you go into housing, let's say I go to the city and I say, hey, you know, Health and Social Services, I'm, I'm homeless. I just got evicted. They'll give me two weeks and I can either stay at the Red Roof or the Super 8. Now you just thrust it a whole family into an environment that they've never been involved in, you know? And that's a whole nother ballgame, but that's where the cycle begins and that's where it starts. From that point, then what happens is you have to, I got, I got on the Section 8 list just like everybody else. I was active or I was on hold or active. All of a sudden I went to non-active. I have no idea why. No one's contacted me. I have no idea. And that was my hope. That was my hope. I was like, oh, I got it. I work for a company that subcontracted through Caltrans and we actually take, sorry, my time's up, but we take people to clean up the freeway. The people we take to clean up the freeway are on probation and parole. A lot of them have been unhoused. Why not use those people? Because they have a little more understanding. Use those people since we're already being contracted through a company, a nonprofit organization to help them clean up the freeway. Why wouldn't we use them? Because they have a little more understanding with the cleanups. Not saying I agree with, I have no opinion on the cleanups. I'm just putting that out there. You asked for solutions. It's, that's the best I could give. I'm just a mom. It takes a village and you guys are my village. So I'm just, we need your help. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The people, followed by Josie McCracken, and then Robert Brecky.
Thank you, City Council, for continuing this conversation around how we support the unhoused. I just want to reiterate that the people declared Vallejo a sanctuary city for all unhoused on December 17th, just days before James Oakley was killed. We've heard a lot of people come up and talk about how unalluring homelessness is to the city. Well, I couldn't tell with how well Art Walk was doing and how La Russell turned out downtown. It doesn't seem to be deterring anybody away from Vallejo. But what I can tell is that Vallejo seems to love black people, black art, black magic, but not unhoused black people, not unhoused brown people. People would have you believe that unhoused people are on drugs. The truth is, more of them would be here tonight if they weren't outside protecting what little property they have left. The people that are unhoused that are here tonight are putting themselves at such a risk just to be here to speak on their own behalf, risking where they're sleeping, what little property they have left. They came here to talk to you. You need to talk to them. You need to listen to the people and center the most impacted people in this conversation, unhoused people. There's tons of solutions that you can look to. The problem is the city has never looked to us for those solutions. There's been all kinds of money poured out in the city. Forty-seven point two, somebody's got that number out there for me, right? Forty-two point something million dollars. What is the, where is it? Where, where is the help? We knew you couldn't do wraparound services. We knew that back then. Our unhoused advocates have been doing frontline work in this community by mutual aid, out of our own pockets. Our grocery money, our rent money, taking care of the unhoused people here in Vallejo, not the city. Follow the money. We demand an audit of every dime that has been spent. We demand an audit of every dime that has been spent around unhoused services, including the navigation center, and a prompt timeline of when we can expect that thing to open. People could be in it right now. Why aren't they? It makes no sense. When we have examples of how self-determined unhoused people, like the Vallejo Homeless Union, like the Berkeley Homeless Union, like Poor Magazine, has visioned, 23 residents are living in permanent rent-free housing that was visioned by unhoused people, led by unhoused people. There are five other sites that are actively being built as we speak. Ground is breaking. Communities are making this solution available to them. You need to start looking at the people who are doing proven, evidence-based, successful projects. Not the same old peanut butter and jelly sandwiches and occasional hygiene and resources groups. I'm talking people that have real solutions, that have shown in other communities where it's being demonstrated out, like Wood Street Commons, a safe community that's self-governed for over 10 years. It's proof that with the right support and resourcing, community can take care of ourselves. We need you to listen and we need you to listen now. We're watching and we expect accountability. Justice for James Oakley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Josie McCracken, followed by Robert Brecky, and then Patrick N.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you again. Last meeting, I was so nervous that I neglected to answer your question posed to the community. You asked for ideas and tonight you're asking of ideas for what we can do together and I really appreciate that. I also neglected to introduce myself and share a bit about the knowledge and experience I have to bring to this discussion. I'm, I live in District 5. I'm Josie. I'm a mental health professional. I've worked in community mental health and disability services for 18 years. And I'll get right to my three suggestions. First, I don't know if I emphasized this enough last time, but I want to appeal to the leadership role that you have. I think that you can continue to model the courage and be an example of how to compassionately listen to others and to regard others as worthy humans. You set the tone and the community is listening. Two, get whatever consultation and counsel that you can to help you figure this out. There's a way to provide housing designated and safe parking and services to people because other cities have done it and there's a way to do it. And before I offer my third suggestion, I wanted to share my professional knowledge about trauma. When humans are living through trauma, all of our energy and focus goes towards surviving through that acute crisis. We go into fight-or-flight mode and a bunch of brain systems go offline. That stress exacerbates any disability or health condition that's going on. And this is a state that our neighbors are living in all the time. I don't know that we can imagine what that's like. So knowing that, suggestion number three, please continue to the actual unhoused people because they will tell you exactly what they need in order to turn their lives around because none of them want to live in that level of threat and trauma. Ask them and they'll tell you directly. They'll tell you that they at the very least need a door with a lock, they need clean water and toilets, they need a place to put their trash, they need healthcare, they need to be with their pets who are their lifeline and their reason to live. They deserve just as much protection as our housed neighbors. They would need respectful, realistic resources and community allies that they can trust, who won't turn on them or lie to them. And once they feel safe and away from that fight-or-flight mode, they can plan their next move and we can help them do that. The sweeps aren't working, people aren't blight, the unhoused are not expendable necessary sacrifices, they are not collateral losses so the rest of us can live in privileged comfort. If this feels impossible, keep trying, talk to us. We're here. Reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Brecky, followed by Patrick N., and then Dre Richard.
Counsel, Mayor.
Closer, sorry. I appreciate this council and the council that preceded you and for all your impassioned thoughts and concerns. I do strongly encourage you to continue the clearing of intolerable situations for the unhoused, dangerous situation for them and the people around. But I'd also like to make a comment that we have to assess what other cities not only are doing and failing at, but really concentrate on the ones that are doing things properly, like in Austin and in Portland, Austin, Texas, and where little structures and some of the concerns about a pet or whatever. And Gensler Architects is working on a project of trying to not have to live up to the building code, but create small things, small structures. And in Santa Rosa, they're doing something, but it's countywide. It's, we cannot, as Vallejo, shoulder all the poor of the Bay Area and we cannot continue to cater to the profiteering of, we have to find smaller solutions. And Napa had 18% decline. People, other cities are sending unhoused here and we have to, we can't, we can't shoulder it all. And a single district that's, we're under account in terms of the numbers, in terms that we, they say it's 789 or whatever, but it's well, well over that. Meanwhile, you have 30 homeless in Venetia. And in Napa, they went down in their numbers last year by 18% to a very low double-digit number as well. And as other cities change their ways, we become the place to go, just like we have been in terms of 65% of the downtown has been subsidized for years with subsidized housing. When they built Glen Cove, that's where they put all their, they should have done inclusive, inclusive, excuse me, populations so that we mingle and we're together, but not that we should bear all of it. And so I do say that we must continue to have clearings, but clearly, it has to be safe and it has to be humane and it has to be without the danger of loss of life.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick N., followed by Dre Richard, and then Diane Peterson.
And I've noticed as we, I really want to thank our earlier speakers for trying to stick to that two minutes. As we've gone longer, we've had people going over and over more. I do want us, we're going to cut people off as you get close to three, just to keep it fair to the speakers near the beginning.
Oh, I get up and now you're going to cut them off at three. Thanks a lot.
It has to be, it has to be somebody. I apologize, sir.
By the way, fancy. This is very fancy. The first thing I want to say is thank you to the council. Not only on this issue, but on many other issues, you've taken on a very difficult and thankless job. And the people I know in Vallejo, myself, we really believe that you're here for the right reasons. You're here for the betterment of Vallejo and your heart's in the right place. So I truly thank you for that and so do a lot of people I interact with on a daily basis. Having said that, when I started thinking I was going to say something, I had kind of a different direction I was going to go in. And after listening to the people speaking on both sides, my thoughts have changed a little bit. I probably had one of the craziest, more outlandish thoughts, a little on the insane side, but both sides are right. I mean, the people who bought homes and invested their life savings to live in this community, the people who have risked everything to start businesses deserve to have safe, clean streets without encampments every place. The people who are living in encampments, they're here and they need to be accommodated as well. And I would encourage the council to look to solutions where they can have a safe place to camp, where their possessions are safe, they can have their pets, it's well-regulated, there's great internet, there's showers, there's, the NGOs, non-government organizations can be there supporting them, all tied up in one place. We look at half a million dollars per affordable unit, which everybody thinks about that sounds insane. In my previous life, I was a real estate broker. My job was to find development opportunities for affordable housing groups. I'm probably responsible for between 500 and 1,000 units in the South Bay, working with the Salvation Army, Catholic Charities, First Community Housing. They would kill for those numbers. So everybody who's down on you for half a million dollars per unit doesn't know what reality is in other communities in the Bay Area. So my only thought would be, take that half a million per unit, put it into safe places for people to camp, well-regulated, but with the services they need to get ahead. And once again, I thank the council for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final three speakers in house are Dre Richard, Diane Peterson, and then Jorge Savala.
Good evening, Council. And Madam Mayor. Going to try to be quick and just kind of give a little bit of information in some of the, I wrote down notes so I could give the two minutes. I thought I'd give more. And this isn't a bash to anybody, this is just, I've worked with council members, worked with the city and some of my friends in the room too. So my name is DeAndre Richard. I'm the chair of the Housing First Solano C O C. and also a program director for Resource Connect Solano. Wanted to just say Housing First, it works. Housing First is get folks into shelters, placements, housing, and then address the barriers or the issues that arise after that or that have been there. So that is a strategy that works. Coordinate entry system is what Resource Connect Solano is and I've connected with Councilman Palmeiras to try to come and explain kind of what we do with coordinate entry and the new collaboration with 211 and how that works and would benefit this city. And so, and come explain that process. We also do outreach in collaboration with the JPA and the CIOT team, Solano Interagency Outreach Team. And we're working with Fourth Second. Fourth Second is the lead in Vallejo with the CIOT team. So working with them to go out into the encampments, I believe, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then provide an in-reach on Wednesdays and Fridays, which would be at the Resource Connect Solano office, which is a part of Camp Minar on Tuolumne Street. And transportation, those are the things that are going to come in. Sorry, I had to skip because I saw the 30 seconds. I keep hearing resume the sweeps, they need a place to go. I don't, they need a place to go. So here's some solutions and I hope this answers Dr. Lettigie's questions. In Sacramento, I worked at First Step Communities, they had a Safe Ground. Safe Ground is a place where they had tents and things like that where the folks would bring the tents and the things that they had there. So you didn't have to purchase those, they brought them there. It was just a safe space that folks could go. They had a parking lot that people who had cars, you could go drive there and you could go stay there in their vehicles. The only thing that was needed was the wraparound services, which is case management, to help Housing First get to the encampment, the Safe Ground, and then help attack the barriers or the issues that assistance is needed for. So you needed to find a location. And I can connect you guys with my folks in Sacramento, Steve Waters, First Step Community, and Mr. Pacheco. Emergency shelters, navigation centers is a great project. That does work to, another solution, bank, they have shelter beds, they cost money, I understand, but that would also get folks additional shelter beds there. And transportation, how do they get there? Resource Connect helps with transportation. Outreach teams around here, Fourth Second, both services help with transportation. And just two really quick things, Vallejo Homeless, the Vallejo Homeless Roundtable, that should be something I think the city takes on. The city of Fairfield runs a Homeless Roundtable every three months. And that's something that the city of Vallejo should do. Vallejo Together has been running that for, ever since I've been at Resource Connect Solano and that's a lot of volunteers that are doing that work. And then lastly, to the vice mayor, just warming centers. I don't think it gets the publicity that's needed when you need to have a degrees, be 32 degrees for two or three consecutive nights. Folks aren't going to know when that's available, when that's not. So I don't think the word, it's something that works too. I just don't think that the word gets out enough.
Time.
Thank you.
Diane Peterson, followed by Jorge Savala.
And then how many online speakers do we have while we wait for her to walk up?
Currently, we have four, Mayor.
Okay, so they're coming up after this next speaker, just so they can know to be ready.
Good evening. I came wanting to listen. I did not think I had much to say. Though I am a person who asks for assistance when faced with homelessness. 25 years ago, with my son, due to no fault of my own, and I was a working, single parent, I got help and then went on to get a degree and worked for near 30 years, seven days a week, sometimes 10, 12-hour days, and went on as long as 13 years without even one day off, just to keep a roof over my family's heads. So to be clear, I get both sides. airing their grievances is important, I do. Both sides I listen to. However, I do not get trying to disappear a problem or people. Criminalizing things that are issues that society has dealt with one way or another since we have started living in groups is not the answer. And it's kind of happening all over the country right now. I want to hear all sides. I want us to find solutions for all. Having said that, something tonight gives me great pause as to what type of solutions have been explored, who did the exploring and what the investigations and possibilities entail. Councilmember Tulak, and Mitulak, thank you, mentioned the mobile home park conversion as a possibility. I'm a mobile homeowner. I knew nothing of it. That's by Cal Maritime. I came to this council just weeks ago and complained about electronic harassment. For the last three years, I've been reporting to the FBI and DOJ. I now, listening tonight for the first time, wonder, did that have anything to do with this? I don't know. But as a homeowner, I sit here and wonder. And I wonder who would do that on either side? Someone so desperate or someone prepared to villainize another side or the government looking for solutions? Or perhaps drug dealers who I know were arrested by the FBI during this time because people who own homes also have drug problems? I don't know. But I want us to work harder and listen to one another and stop yelling at each other and stop villainizing one another because it's a problem that needs to be solved. Everyone, even those maybe not, who are in the middle are being victimized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jorge Savala. Is Jorge here?
And there's a switch on your right if you want to raise the podium.
Cool, thank you. Jorge Savala, here with my daughter, obviously, Halani. Yeah, it's her first civic engagement opportunity is, I believe, using your voice to share what's going on and offer your opinions, concerns, or experiences is also critical in this space. And so I'm coming to you here as a resident of Solano County. Many of my friends are telling me to move to Vallejo. I love this little city and been here for about four years. And overall, I've worked with many social service programs, church groups, and honestly, I looked up online, I'm like, what is this city council meeting about? And first off, the agenda didn't tell you anything besides closed session. So I had to go online and actually listen in and get some messages, like, okay, I should be here. Coincidentally, I was at St. Catherine's here this afternoon, this evening, watching a movie called No Address. I don't know if y'all know about my aunties at St. Catherine's, but they feed about 600 people three times a week, canvassing, working with Vallejo Together and other groups to make sure that people are fed. Thank you. And so it's challenging, right? Because that number went from 200, 150 when I first started with them years ago, now we're at 600. And the numbers are only going to grow because there's people on fixed incomes, right? Social Security or disability that are not keeping up with inflation or the cost of rent. And so in some of these highlights, right? I want to lift up a couple people here that we're just talking about, looking at what's working in other cities. A multifaceted approach, compassion with accountability, taking a human-centered approach, creating a welcoming environment. Where I've seen these types of programs when I lived in Florida, for example, where there is some individual that comes in, doesn't have a birth certificate or driver license, they help them on top of getting housing. A lot of folks that I meet out on the streets don't have these documents required to be able to get what they need, right? And so looking at, I'd strongly encourage all of you, and I'd invite you to the church to come and watch this and have a conversation with other faith leaders, business leaders, and everybody in this room. Come on down. And thank you, Ms. Natalie, for always reaching out and providing the support, right? It's got to, we got to look at how can we come all together, right? I know that the city of Vallejo takes a brunt of impacts here, right? It's a countywide issue and I'll finish up in 15 seconds. And so we'll take a person-centered approach, have dialogue. And so we'll take a person-centered approach, have dialogue, conversation. It's not gonna end tonight, obviously, where there's no gonna be solutions. So I appreciate all of y'all for staying late and hearing all the comments. And I'm up for continuing this conversation. So thank you. And y'all know where to find me.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that's it for our in-person speakers.
That's it for in-person.
All right, so I want to thank everyone that stayed with us to speak in person. And let's go ahead and start calling our online speakers. You said four, or how many were there?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have four speakers. And you want to allot them the two minutes?
We'll do the same thing. We'll do the two minutes and then a little bit of grace period, try to keep it fair for everybody.
Okay, first speaker is Esobet B. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. It hurts me to say it, but I've lost track of the number of people I've known younger than myself that have died on the streets of Vallejo. I can't say that the third of their lives, 25 years by the lifespan statistics, that my unhoused friends are likely to be denied, is due entirely to sweeps. But it's a big factor. Vallejo prides itself on having strong community values. I've seen firsthand that my unhoused neighbors and friends embody that community spirit the most. It's not out of, just out of shared experience, it's out of necessity. And when those communities are scattered, especially when it happens over and over again, people die. When street medical teams can no longer find their clients, folks I've known with diabetes or heart problems, when they can't be found because they've been swept to who knows where, people die. When people have their shelter brutally taken away by towing, by destruction of tents, people don't just die, city policy kills them. Please, sit with that for a moment. You know that repeatedly forcing people out of their living space exacerbates the problem and kills people. And you have campaigned, committed to countless long nights, and earned a sacred trust within our community to have the power to stop it. Will you betray that trust and restart the deadly torture? Or will you listen to the pleas of those who are most vulnerable, most discriminated against, and work, all of us together, to save lives? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next speaker, Crystal G. Please unmute yourself, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Great. Yeah, and heard somebody just recently start by saying, I'm not here to rag anyone. I am. How can you not point fingers where they belong? I'm shocked at the callousness of the pro-sweep, pro-violence, pro-death people. Those who rush and make sure they're number one in line, the Ann Cars, the Paula Conleys, who want to hide the true realities of what they feel and the hate that they spew online, such as suggesting that James Oakley purposely hid himself. Why don't you explain why you said that? Think he wanted to die? These disgusting words are shocking and unacceptable. We come here again and again and hear from people with so-called "solutions"? Have any of you pro-sweep tyrants even considered speaking to the experts, the unsheltered experts, who are here begging for basic dignity that you refuse to offer? The person who conducted the so-called surveys via Facebook? Did you reach out to the unhoused experts? You say people are too passionate here, and it intimidates and offends them. Are you offended by the realities of death by sweeps? The realities of the history of racist redlining in this city that has led to these realities? Not talking about any of the root cause issues, such as the fact that we have no tenant protections in this city? But just pointing to these solutions that you come up with yourself? Never going to the experts who understand what it's like to be unsheltered? Why aren't you offended by that? You're scared of them? No, you're scary.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Mary J. Go right ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I appreciate this time to speak again. I honestly feel that I did share my opinion the last time I spoke on this subject. And I'll reiterate it real quick, is, and other people have said it tonight, that we need to be in community, and the solution really is to directly work with the community, which would be the Vallejo Homeless Union. Speaking with the directly affected and working with the directly affected is the easiest solution here. I think most people would say that offering people services right now that can actually help them right now in the streets would be the most effective thing to do. Something as simple that myself and my friends do is buy camping equipment for people, such as porta-potties. There's like these little tents and buckets and setups that you can buy. It's like $30 for the entire setup. These things do get thrown away in sweeps, but it's just a small solution to help people stay clean. And I think that's what everybody wants. People who are living in the streets and every neighbor. And I think that's the point that I really want to come across here, is that people living in the streets are our neighbors. They're not others. You know, we are a community. And it's been so hard to listen to the callousness, as somebody's just spoke of tonight, that people can be spoken of as disposable, and we're not. We should be taking care of our community together. So I appreciate this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last public speaker, Jessica P. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, may you remember, so the Vallejo City Council. My name is Jessica Prado, and I'm a representative of the Berkeley Homeless Union. I'm here in solidarity with unhoused residents in Vallejo and the Vallejo Homeless Union, who have been organizing to improve conditions on the ground and advocate for lasting solutions. As my Congress said earlier, our union is urging the city of Vallejo to pause encampment sweeps and closures, and instead collaborate with the Vallejos Homeless Union and unhoused communities on voluntary cleanup initiatives, like the ones we've been organizing in Berkeley. Our bi-weekly community cleanups not only help address public health concerns and illegal dumping, but also foster trust, reduce trauma, beautify the streets with art, and build relationships with camp residents, city staff, and the surrounding neighbors. In the comments tonight, I've heard unhoused residents in Vallejo wanting to be part of the solution. They're stepping up to care for their homes and their community, but they need support from you, not displacement. We're also calling for this shift because we've seen the tragic consequences of business as usual. This past Christmas Eve, James Oakley was crushed to death by a public works backhoe during an encampment sweep. He died of blunt force trauma. This incident could have been preventable. It demonstrates a failure of policy, communication, and care for unhoused neighbors. Encampment sweeps also destroy vital possessions and worsen the mental health of people. But when unhoused residents are empowered, supported, and most importantly, treated as partners, you know, real change is possible. So please support solutions led by the people most affected. Choose a way forward, not just out of sight. Rest in power, James Oakley.
Thank you. All right, I believe that's gonna close our public comment. Again, I want to thank all the speakers. We're finding ourselves in a similar situation to last time, but with a little bit of time for discussion. And I want to open it up to my colleagues, starting with Councilmember Gordon. I'm gonna run back and refill my water, but go ahead, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. My name is Helen Marie, AKA Cookie Gordon. I came here to Vallejo homeless. That's hard to tell folks that, because transparency is you get judged. But I came here with four children, one teen mom, a son who was diagnosed with Down Syndrome, who was in a wheelchair, and I was diagnosed with Graves' disease. Come to find out, it was worse than what they anticipate. So while I stayed in a shelter, I was suffering from worse cancer than you can imagine. My husband at the time suffered from PTSD. When he served for the United States Navy, his ship was the one that went and got all the soldiers from Beirut. We didn't know what that was at the time. But having the stress of everything at one time caused him to not be there for his family. And therefore, either I had a choice to lay down or get up. Lose my children or fight. And I did. I sat on the phone for hours trying to find a place to stay, because why? The banks wanted to raise my rent twice as much as what I was paying, which was $950 for a three-bedroom. I always stayed in my location more than seven years. It was a pride of mine. And then, only way I can get help is if I was on drugs, or my children was in a system, and that was not my case. I had extra credit, but yet, nobody wanted us, because I didn't know the word gentrification and what that had to do with me. But that was the plan. I sat on the phone for days, and I wanted to stay at the military places until I was able to find Christian Help Center that would help house all my family. Otherwise, in between places, I would have to have my son here, my daughter there, and Christopher somewhere else, because they didn't want women to sleep with young men. They wanted our children to be displaced. And Christian Help Center helped me, because I wanted the help. I said, why they, I tried to make sure they had fun. I took them to the park. I did picnic with them, because I didn't want them to see and know what I was worried about. And I was scared that I was failing them. But I fought hard, so they would not see me one night in the street. And I got, and finally got into a place on Cypress and Lemon, and I volunteered and still had to pay $1,000 for a piece of dump, in my opinion. But I volunteered still, knowing, mind you, remember, I suffered from the cancer that they didn't know that was so bad. But I did not want my kids to experience one night a street, not one day. And I tried to make it as beautiful as possible. And one day, I walked by the house, and I just wanted to know if I should keep on walking, because I felt like I was failing them. But something says, stand up for them. They need you. And today, I'm telling you, I stayed in my, I fought every day. 2007, I found my apartment. Christian Help Center helped me get in it. And I have done everything in my possible power to make sure I never see the street again in life. But I had to fight hard for that. I had to want it. I had to crave it. And it was hard, because I did have a lot of obstacles against me. So I understand what it's like to be homeless. I experienced it as a teenager. Me and my friend, we moved in together, we went to school together. And because she decided to date somebody who was on drugs, she did not pay my portion. Thank God I got my receipt, otherwise I couldn't get my balonies. I slept in the street and still worked at the hospital, making $8 an hour. Took a shower there at work, and stayed up all night in the restaurants. So I didn't want my kids to experience that. I'm not being insensitive. I'm trying to explain to you, I understand how you feel. But at the same token, if I'm homeless, you're not going to know it. And they never knew it. Nobody knew that I was, as a 19-year-old to 22-years-old, 21-years-old, excuse me. So I'm saying to you is that we're not trying to be cruel to you. But we know that is, this lady got bit in Wilson Park by a rat. And now she's in Writers, I believe she's, that's where she's at now. And she won't go get help, because she just won't do it. But I'm saying to you is, we're worried about you as well. We don't want you to live like that. You don't deserve it. You deserve to have the best quality life. You have a gift that we need. And I'm not judging you, because I sit here humbly telling you my story. I do know, when I first moved here, my rent was at $750 for a two-bedroom. Now it's almost $3,000 for people. So there has to be a rent control. There has to be rent protection. That has to be, I've been begging for that for a long time. We can't even get what we want, let alone deal with what we need. So that is true. We do need to fight for that. But I tell you this story, because I look at every last one of you that came up to this mic, and every last one of you had something, and was begging for compassion, begging for dignity and respect, on both sides. We fight hard for each other. And I don't like that, I wish I would, I asked you guys to stand up and switch sides in between one another, because it's not a you side, that side, it's us. This is our city. But we have to be honest with ourselves. I know you wouldn't want to come into my house if it was messy. I know you wouldn't want to eat no food from me if I didn't clean my house. So I'm saying to you, yes, we definitely need to make sure we clean up our cities and have services for you. So if you do need, and while you're trying to get services, but there's people out there that says, I don't want to live in a house. I want this freedom. And that's understandable. We, I want to say, in telling my story, and I'm telling you it's hard to do, because I'm not trying to be proud. Everybody know Cookie, I'm authentic. It's just sometimes people look different at you. And that's okay, I'll accept that. I want, as I tell you my story, I would like to ask, Manny, could you please show the map for the fire department? I wanted to show you the areas that are affected of this. Can you please explain this, please?
So the map on the screen shows a heat map for calls for the last year, from March 1st, 2023, 2024, through March, I believe, 18th, 2025, of calls for service from the fire department. For North County is the one that's currently, or North Vallejo on the first screen right here. And then as Manny continues to scroll down, it moves into South Vallejo. So the brighter the dots are, the more red is, the more frequency of calls. So these are, again, calls for service from our fire department to encampments. And these can range from showing up for fires to medical calls.
Thank you so much for that. And I asked to show you this, because when I first moved here by force, but I'm glad Vallejo accepted me by choice. There was a lady, I don't know if you remember her, she was an elderly African-American lady, and she used to be on Tennessee all the time. And she died, and no one knew. For a long time, no one knew that she had died. I said that because we don't want to experience that. And then being unhoused, people don't understand how scary that is for them as well. I heard that a lady got raped. She's running down the street, clothes half-off. She says she just got raped in her encampment. So you're right. It is, it is something to be considered, to be, to take seriously, that everyone have to understand. It is very dangerous. And we want to make sure you're safe. I'm not saying that to be insensitive, but I'm pointing out the fact that it happens for housed people too. But there's someone that's in your family can probably help you versus someone that you think you can trust, because we have something in common. We're unhoused together. My next thing I wanted to say was, can you please share, Natalie, the levels of your sweep?
Yes, so before I answer that, just for anybody who was interested in looking at the map more, that, as well as information from the last meeting, is on the website, either as attachments or under the Supplemental Documents folder. So for anybody who didn't get a chance to look at that. So the process for doing encampment cleanups is high-level outline and attachment. So the process for doing encampment cleanups is high-level outline and attachment. And one of the attachments, which is seven point ten, which is our administrative role, that kind of guides this process. So encampment cleanups, once a location is identified, it is posted for a cleanup, a minimum of seventy-two hours prior to the cleanup. We typically try and get out there a week prior to do the posting. As part of the posting, city staff go throughout the encampment and connect with individuals who reside at the location. Provide them with a copy of the notice as well as the resource flyer that the city has on its website. It's also, I believe, one of the supplemental items on the website. It is also found on the myvallejo.com/homelissresources webpage where we are always looking to update that information. So if you have additional information that may be missing or updated information, please do reach out. You can email us at homelessness@cityofvallejo.net. So as part of that conversation, we do let individuals know what it's going to look like when the encampment cleanup comes, what the expectations are in regards to the cleanup beginning. And that we do offer the service of storing items that individuals may not be able to bring with them or if individuals are not at the site and we come across items that meet the descriptions for storage, that we will store those for them for up to ninety days. During the day of the cleanup, city staff again go through and connect with the individuals on the site. Let them know that the cleanup is beginning. And we work with the individuals, sometimes up to three, four, five hours before we have to ask them to leave the property for safety reasons, to gather the belongings that they would like to leave with, again, bring the information. And supplies to store any items that may need to be stored. And really try and go through that process and give them ample time the day of to determine which items they'd like to bring. After that is done, then the cleanup occurs for sometimes several days, depending on the location and the, like, the size or the difficulty to getting to things. Sometimes, you know, working on the railroad tracks can take a little bit longer because to get the equipment and/or the staff in and out just is a slightly slower process than things that are maybe more curbside or easily accessible by roads.
Did you share with me that you do five steps? Like, for example, if you go someplace and you see that they're not really affecting neighbors and... That's what, that's what I meant by that. Just like that level. I'm sorry.
Gotcha, yes. So there is some priorities when looking at encampments to address. So ADA-related concerns such as blocking sidewalks, blocking roadways are prioritized and some of the first ones that are done because we have to think of the ADA concerns for the community at large while addressing those. Those can be done a little bit more expeditiously versus waiting the seventy-two hours. But we try and bring staff and bring resources and provide extra support if we do have to do that on a quicker turnaround. We also prioritize locations that are on environmentally sensitive areas. For example, the White Slough area, waters along, areas along waterways or creeks. We also look to address areas that are where youth go. So schools, the libraries, parks. And then kind of make our way out to residential neighborhoods and areas of business.
Thank you for that. And then my last question I'd like for you, and this is totally up to you whether you want to share or not. But can you please share how this has affected you?
Yeah, so I'm happy to discuss what goes on. So in terms of these cleanups, you know, I can speak for myself and I think I can speak for our staff at large is we don't go out with the intent to do harm or create issues. We are trying to weigh some very difficult situations for the community at large, understanding that there's complex needs and, you know, complex issues that are going on throughout the nation. Personally, it is difficult work. We are, you know, although fixing streets and doing all of these other things are very important work, we're dealing with human beings. We're dealing with lives. We're dealing with safety. And that's something that weighs on my, you know, myself as I'm working through these and really trying to, to address the work as compassionately as possible with the individuals that we are affecting as possible. But also understanding that we have the city at large that we are working to support and trying to weigh those can definitely weigh on me as an individual.
Thank you for sharing. And I wanted to let you all know. So my son, my daughter is down thirty-six, and they still have those experience. But yet, they are, they have never been unhoused. They are working, she's working on her masters. My son who's thirty-three, he's been in the military. He was discharged on honors. And he has a dual master's degree. My son Charles, Navy, he spoke here when I was sworn in. And he too was Navy discharged on disability. And as you all know, my son Christopher. And I wonder all the time if I failed them. And that's why I work hard for everybody. I speak for everybody. Was a community advocate before I came here. I've been doing the work. And I understand where you're from, where you're coming from. Please understand, I agree with Natalie, how she feels. It's not easy work. And I'm grateful for my colleagues here because we all ran the campaign to want to do more for you and for Vallejo. And that's all of you. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. And I have Councilmember Palmaras and then Councilmember Matias.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. I really appreciate that story. I know it's not an easy story to tell. And I appreciate everyone here tonight who made those public comments. You wouldn't be here unless you felt passionately about this community. I want to preface by saying that homelessness is obviously a complex issue. And for the sake of brevity, I encourage my fellow councilmembers to focus our discussion on how we engage the unhoused as they are now. And by that, I hope we can refrain from wandering into strategic discussions and not getting into what happens when the unhoused receiving services or housing from our continuum of care. I believe we could reserve that conversation for later. If there is a situation where public safety is endangered and public spaces are severely degraded, I am compelled to support enforcing our laws, which can include the application of sleep and cleanups. With that said, we can do a lot more to address homelessness without going into the bulk of our forthcoming homelessness strategy. So I have the following recommendations. First, let's reexamine our processes. How much notification are we providing in reality? How effective are those notifications? How much are we collaborating with CBOs to ensure a smooth transition from one location to the next? How much assistance can we provide in terms of storage and logistics of moving one's property? How can we better consider unhoused people's needs and abilities prior to moving? And how can we better check the safety of the unhoused prior to any city action? Second, let's identify priority areas in which we do not want any encampments and what quantifies as significant. Places to consider civic spaces, green spaces, and schools. My hope is that we can partner and coordinate with CBOs to assist in that transition. Third, let's make it easier to have cleaner communities. Through Public Works, we can distribute trash bags to unhoused individuals and create conspicuous spaces for the unhoused to dump their trash bags. Situate dumpsters and porta-potties and encampments, preferably outside of those aforementioned priority areas, and ensure these spaces are regularly maintained and cleaned. Fourth, let's create a reunification program. Through CBOs and faith-based organizations, we can facilitate the communications and logistics necessary to help folks find their way back to their loved ones. I know I've met a couple pastors who have done this personally, and I have done this personally. Fifth, let's develop a plan to address real criminals, especially drug traffickers and illegal dumpers who infiltrate and exploit encampments. Six, let's coordinate an outreach team. Whether we hire them, work through CBOs, or work with our continuum of care, I don't really care. But we need to take the reins of the situation. This outreach team would understand who's who in each encampment, create those by-name lists, build relationships and trust with individuals, many of whom have endured a high degree of trauma, and hopefully connect them with folks who can take care of them and empower them better than we can. With a robust outreach team, we can work with our coordinate entry program and apply what HUD calls housing problem solving, which gravely addresses the multitude of little challenges like securing driver's licenses, security deposits, and movie expenses. These little challenges are virtually insurmountable if you're homeless and do not have the access to the right resources. This can make a significant dent without having to build more housing. And this sets them up for success for whenever a housing opportunity arises. This also implies a reexamination of how closely we work with our continuum of care and those agencies and organizations with specializations in addressing behavioral health and drug addiction. Lastly, while I don't want to wander too far into our forthcoming strategy, I'd like to recommend taking another look at collaborating with faith-based organizations to assist with establishing safe sites at the parking lots. I'm hoping we can spread and dilute the imprint of the unhoused population, keeping especially safe the unhoused individuals with families and unhoused individuals who otherwise want to be separated from folks with criminal intentions. That ends my comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Matias and then Councilmember Mathulak and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And just want to thank everyone that has come out to our meetings, these last two meetings, to share their thoughts, as well as those that have commented online. And I also want to extend my gratitude to the mayor for calling this meeting, prioritizing, again, the public safety, which is both a priority for our unhoused folks and our housed folks. I also have some prepared remarks. My position's been fairly consistent, and I've been asked about it for the better part of a year, concluding with the election that we had this past November. I firmly believe that we, as a city, have a responsibility to provide support and services to residents experiencing homelessness within our means. I also believe we should advance pro-housing policies and protections that have been effective in other cities. Pro-housing policies that get folks into housing, have it be temporary or permanent, to determine thereafter what services each resident needs. The city of Vallejo has made an effort at various points in the past few years to provide supports and services from Project Room Key to the Sacramento Street Project, to the not-yet-open Navigation Center and Broadway Project. Former Councilmember Loretta Diaz even proposed a safe parking program where there would be wraparound services. Although that program didn't see the light of day, the last council and this council has tried various initiatives. I do also want to note that the city also chose not to enforce anti-encampment laws for the better part of two and a half years. They chose to do so even though there were allegedly other cities across the nation and other states that engaged in very questionable and dubious practices. These decisions, though not successful in addressing the root causes, were attempts made by the city. Like I said, the city has tried, and it has made many mistakes, but it has at least tried. I would have started by asking folks experiencing homelessness what it is that they need first, instead of pushing for so many projects forward like we did over the past couple of years. And I say that because in some instances, the folks that are experiencing homelessness have not exclusively benefited from the projects that we have pushed as a city. To suggest that the city hasn't tried or has been ill-intentioned, I believe is unfair. Just the same way it is unfair for folks to suggest that all people experiencing homelessness are criminals or that they are all choosing to experience homelessness. People experiencing homelessness are also experiencing trauma. And so are folks living in homes here in Vallejo who have lived on fixed income, have seen the cost of living increase, and have seen public safety calls unanswered and their city's potential unrealized for far too long. They too have shared with me the trauma that they've experienced. I share this with you because I think it's important for us to all lower the temperature a little bit. Doing so allows us to hear each other's perspectives and arrive at a solution that works for all Vallejones. I, for one, am grateful for how solutions-oriented and respectful the dialogue was at our in-person meeting last time and how respectful, for the most part, it was at this meeting. The problem is and will continue to be that the state and the federal government need to intervene in ways that they have in the past but have not done so this go-around. And that's just not with money. I have a few suggestions for consideration to city staff. I believe city staff, Vallejo Together and other nonprofits should survey people experiencing homelessness to identify their needs. And that may look very differently for each individual. I can talk about that because I've worked with unhoused folks myself. Engage our nonprofit partners like Vallejo Together, the Solano Dream Center, and the iHeart team to expand their scopes of work to include case management that specifically gets support to folks dealing with mental health or substance abuse challenges, as well as children and families. I would like to see metrics reported out at future meetings. Number of residents housed, number of residents receiving services. That level of report-out is going to give the public some transparency into our efforts and really provide clarity on how many folks were moving from the streets into the services and supports that they need. I also agree with my colleagues around engaging our faith leaders to more meaningfully explore the possibility of using their facilities as emergency shelters and overnight safe parking locations. I will also be suggesting to staff over email two locations to explore as possibilities that were not included in their property of, city-owned property. And I also agree with Vice Mayor Brigenza that we should look at temporary hotel vouchers, which are being used in other cities as an option, and set aside limited funding to help support that effort. I'm sorry, I'm almost done, folks. I also believe that the two-by-two city council meetings that we have with the school district should include an ongoing agenda item, receiving a report-out from the McKinney-Vento Homelessness Coordinator to ensure that there's coordination between our entities and alignment on investments to support our youth experiencing homelessness. Similarly, while we get the Broadway and Navigation projects online, we should also partner with SDA to make transportation available to nearby shelters in neighboring cities. And to one of the other public commenters, the city attorney should also prioritize relevant tenant rights and protection ordinances in the housing element for immediate council consideration. Not six months from now, not another year from now, immediate council consideration because this is a part of our public safety initiative. And lastly, I do believe that cleanups should continue with high priority on high-traffic areas. But there should be, like my other recommendations, representatives from Vallejo Together, Solano Dream, faith-based, also faith-based groups, and as well as city staff to be monitors to ensure that these are done in a humane way. And lastly, I suggest these solutions to continue to make progress on providing supports to people experiencing homelessness while also acknowledging the very real public safety concerns raised by our residents and the need to focus on economic development to raise revenue that can provide additional supports and services to folks in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. All right. Councilmember Mathulak and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to especially say thank you to Councilmember Gordon for sharing her own personal story. As a professional social worker in the field for over ten years, one of the things that we learn and we train to do is understand the lived experiences of people in challenging situations. And to understand that, we need to hear these lived experiences. And in this case, on both sides, for those that are, that have been unhoused, we need to understand the root causes of how they got there. And it varies in every situation, whether it's domestic violence. And it varies in every situation, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's losing their job, whether it's a mental condition, whether it's a medical condition. All of those impact how people got into certain situations. And for someone to place blame, or criticism, or to judge people in those, it's unfair to those individuals, because unless you've walked in their shoes, it's very difficult to say what they're doing wrong and how they came about what their situation was. So for me, I like to take these lived experiences and understand where they came from. And I would like to think, on both sides of this conversation, that hearing the stories tonight, that both sides have understood of the other side maybe a little bit better. Whether you agree with it or not, it's to the point of understanding the shoes that they've been walking in and why they, and why they believe, what they believe in such a passionate manner. And I also want to commend Councilmember Palmeris and Councilmember Mathias for what they've shared. I agree with much of what they've said and want to piggyback on a lot of that. And it starts with coming up with the wraparound services. I mean, we could, we could talk about providing shelters and basically putting a roof over someone's head, but because of their situation, unless they have the support to deal with a drug addiction, to deal with the domestic violence, or to deal with their situation, it's going to be an ongoing issue until we, until we, as a society, can identify how to solve some of these situations. And we need to do that, and a lot of it deals with the funding sources and economic development. And to some of those charts that Natalie presented at the beginning, if you looked, if you paid attention to the percentages of those that found permanent housing or found temporary housing, you didn't find one that was above 50%. So we need to focus on the level, we need to focus on the number where it's 60% or more that aren't getting into housing, and understand how to fix that number. And in some of these cases, it's exactly what's been talked about, and what Councilmember Gordon talked about, is that many of them may not want the help or support that's offered out there. And we are not, and we should be the ones judging that, that is their own personal decision. But what we can focus on are for those that do want the help and support and need the support, that we find, that we have the ability to help those individuals to get that, to get the help that they're looking for and the success that they're looking for. I want to appreciate Councilmember Mathias for bringing up iHeart, the two-by-two. And especially want to appreciate Dre Richardson for coming up and speaking and sharing what his role is, because I had the opportunity and the honor to serve on the Capsolano Tripartite Advisory Commission, or the Advisory Board. And for those that may not be familiar with that, what that is, that's an advisory board to the Capsolano JPA. And what, what we've done in those is, we actually have a group of individuals, Jose Carizales being one of them, but most of those individuals on that advisory board, they are people with lived experiences that are working and have found the success of getting out of their situations, and they're trying to provide their experiences to help, to help identify how to get these supports and resources to those that are still in those situations. So I would like to use that type of model and bring that down to Vallejo and to create a similar advisory board with here, with, within the city, that starts with the iHeart, dealing, and using the two-by-two, and having a collaborative solution of all of our local community leaders, especially in the faith-based, the CBOs, all of those that are actually doing a lot of the work in their own individual situations, the Pastor Brian Harris', the Pastor Summers', the Orlando Grants, they are all in our community, these nonprofit organizations, the Mila Hanese. They're all playing their little part, but we, what I would like to see is all of us come together. And this is the whole adage of, it takes a village to raise our whole community. And this is where I think that we need to have that conversation. And what I think was, was a highlight today is, we haven't involved the unhoused in part of this conversation. So I think we need to do a better job of having their voices part of this. Because from what I'm hearing today, it's not the people that showed up today to speak from the unhoused community, it's the ones that aren't there, that are at the forefront and that are causing the challenge that people are trying to group, the whole unhoused community. And so we need to take a step back and understand where that conversation is coming from, and use the voices of those unhoused that want to take accountability for the situation, but also take accountability for those individuals in the unhoused community that aren't being the, the people that we want them to be. So I think, once again, it's taking all of these voices and bringing it all together. And I want to give credit, there was a previous conversation that we had with, amongst some of us councilmembers, about how do we deal with potentially the criminality that's happening in our, in some of these unhoused communities? And I want to give credit to Mayor Source of identifying, maybe we should use the PSPP program of seeing what federal support we can get to kind of clean up these areas. Because if we're removing the criminality off of, out of some of these communities, that's the bad, those are the bad elements that are impacting the unhoused community that makes it one day, one, a little bit safer for those that are actually in it, that'll want, that want that safer community. So I think, once again, this goes back to what we've already, what we've already commented on from Councilmember Gordon, Councilmember Palmeris, and Councilmember Mathias, of coming together as a whole community and identifying and actually utilizing a lot of the resources we already have here. And I want to give a special shout-out to Marissa S., who serves on our Human Relations Commission, and the fact that she gave Natalie a shout-out. This is, to me, being on this, of our city's staff to have to deal with this, this goes beyond Natalie and the other individuals that are part of our, and Flor, that are part of our, that we consider is our unhoused department, our unhoused team that deals with the unhoused, and it's beyond a two-person job. And the fact that Capsolano JPA, with all of their resources, if they're not able to figure out, how can we put the burden on Natalie and Flor and the rest of the team there, to think that they can solve it within our city? So I think it's unfair to Natalie and that whole team to say that they are the ones that are at blame, or they're the ones that haven't done the job, because they've done the best that they've, they've been able to do, but they don't have the bandwidth that they deserve the county and this whole nation deserves, requires, to deal with this situation. So to put the blame on a certain few individual, I think, individuals, I think that's unfair, and we need to take accountability as a group to figure out, how do we support everyone? How do we support the whole city in addressing this issue? So, once again, it's, it's just, we need to look at where the places have been successful. I think we've identified some, we talked about Dignity Village, we talked about over in Berkeley, things in Austin, Texas. We need to actually take a federal, a closer look at some of these places that have been successful and see how we can implement some of those successes here in Vallejo. But once again, that takes time and effort to do that, and we just haven't had the bandwidth and the ability to do that as a city, which I think if we put a more of a focus on that, I think we have that ability to do that. But once again, I think, I hope that we all, as a city, have learned, listening to each other's lived experiences, have an appreciation and understanding of where people are coming from, but appreciate, but have the respect for where their opposition may be, and maybe we can work together to solve this, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Right. Vice Mayor Brigenza, and then Councilmember Lettu.
Thank you, Mayor. And because of the late hour, I will keep my comments brief because I agree with much of everything that was said. I do want to specifically thank Councilmember Gordon for sharing your story. I have not been homeless, and it really puts humbleness to your story, and I really appreciate it. And I think that really speaks to what, I think what Councilmember Mathulak was getting towards was instituting a homeless roundtable. I think having something monthly where we can have unhoused, as well as the faith-based groups, as well as city staff, even some councilmembers, participate to really hash out some of those solutions. Because I think we keep hearing that there are solutions that we're not looking at, but we're not really hearing what those solutions truly are. So I think having a smaller group where we can share those ideas, I think, would be a really helpful, fruitful thing to do. Things that I would like to have information just upfront quickly is the opening dates for the Broadway project, again, are, do we know that?
End of May.
The end of May, and then the Navigation Center is like soon, right? I thought it was March.
It's anticipated to be opened by May. We are finalizing contracts with the operator, as well as construction. But we, as soon as we have an exact date, we will get that to council.
So we're looking in May for both, potentially for the project?
Yes.
Okay, so help is coming, at least. I would like to focus some specific things. I did appreciate especially Councilmember Palmeris's pointed efforts, but I would like to look at, dig a deep dive into a safe place for camping and for parking in cars and RVs. I think if we have a place for that to happen, I don't, you know, I understand that security is very expensive, and that's probably the biggest piece, but I think we need to look at ways to try to figure this out. And I don't think that we can do that unless we have a place that we can have people move to. Because I do think that we, we do need to continue the sweeps, the sweep efforts, but I would like to add to your checklist, part of what Councilmember Palmeris talked about was adding a dumpster when you give the notice that this, this sweep is going to happen, that we provide a dumpster that, that they can do some self-maintenance and do some of the cleanup themselves, so that it's more humane and they can decide what goes and what doesn't over the period of a few days before you get there, would be really helpful. I would also like to look at the Homeward Bound Program and see if there's potentially some unhoused individuals who would like to be brought back to their families, if that's possible. Certainly, we don't want to send people away just to, you know, wash our hands of them, but if they have family resources that they can get to, we would like to try to connect them back to that. And then again, also the hotel vouchers, looking at doing that instead of, or in addition to the warming shelters. And I think everyone has already spoken about the rest of my points, so I'll leave it at that. But I just wanted to make those points in addition to what the council members have already spoken of. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Right, Councilmember Lettu.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon, for just exposing yourself and being really transparent in your experiences of your life. And something that I want to say is, but for the grace of God, that each of us are where we are. And oftentimes, I think about what I do each and every day, and the good fortune that I've had over the last six years, as hard as it's been to serve over 15,000 households who are literally under income. And if it weren't for the fact that they have a housing choice voucher, or to many known as Section 8, I will tell you, they would be on the street. And whether you realize it or not, many of my families get up every morning and they go to work. They're not lazy, they're not sitting at home doing nothing, I can guarantee you that. But for the grace of God, I am housed, and some of you are housed. And in the discussion, something that is really important when I think about this city that I've lived in for over 16 years, and I really do love, and I feel so honored to be able to serve each and every one of you, regardless of your economic status, where you live or you don't live, is unimportant to me. And what I care about most in this work is that this city, meaning we, are healed, because there is so much trauma here. And the housed, and those of us who are housed, and I live in Glen Cove, and I will tell you, in the times that I campaigned, even though I was the only one running this race, I did knock on doors, I campaigned, I ran my race. And I heard many stories, and I've listened to mothers and grandmothers talk about their children being unhoused even in the city. I want to tell us that. And it's amazing to hear their stories, to hear the mental health challenges that their children are having, and they have no control over it. And I'm a mother too, and I'm so fortunate that my children are doing well, but for the grace of God. And so I say all this to say to us that it is hard, whichever side you're living on, unhoused or housed, and even to stay housed, because you never know. It takes one thing to unearth your whole life. It's possible. And without compassion, without care, regardless of what side you're on, it is difficult to rebound. And I never forget that each and every day, about how blessed I am to be where I am today. And I have had the opportunity, when my children were getting through school, where we have housed children, where they've had to share their house with unhoused children that were their school friends, and they had nowhere to go. And I will tell you, I have more today than I did then, but we made that sacrifice because we understood the importance of those children being successful. And there are times that on my LinkedIn, I get these notes that say, "If it weren't for your family, I wouldn't be where we are today." This is how we're thriving. And I want us to remember how we are jointly fitted together, and it's going to take each and every one of us to make our city work. We have to have economic development, that's not a secret. We have to house people, we need all the different things. And there are many solutions. We have a county that we need to work much closer with, that we need to respond when they call us. We have our supervisor, James, Cassandra James, who is in District 1, we can work with her office. We have our COC that we can work with. With our encampments, we can bring in services when we are doing the different things that we need to. They just need us to answer, to call them, and they will come and respond. Am I right, Dre? Thank you. We have to do our part too, and we have to know how to do it. And so that means that our city staff needs some more support. But there are resources and there are ways to immediately begin to move the needle. We just have to do it, and we have to be organized and get it done. It's really that simple. And I'm going to say this publicly, I don't want to spend another $175,000 on a report, because I don't believe that it's going to take a report. And I'm going to call out a couple people in this room, Ms. Carr, Dre, Ms. Francie, Melvin, and Tony is here from Cassandra James's office, Eli. I want you all to get together and start talking. And Ms. Carr is laughing at me, yes, I'm calling you out. But I want you all to get together and start talking. We have a homeless roundtable that Vallejo Together, I know this for a fact, Dre has mentioned it, has been carrying it, and we need to figure out, as a city, how we're going to carry that, because that is the beginning of bringing together everybody, so that we can do this work. Palmeris, Councilmember Palmeris, and I both are on the JPA, so I'm volunteering him to include him in this process along with myself. But we are going to solve this in a humane way. We do have to have clean streets. And I have talked to those who have been working, who work with our unhoused. We do have to have clean streets. We do have to have safety in the camps, around our public ways, and so forth and on. We can't continue to just let it be. So, just like it was said, there has been suggestions made that our individuals who are not housed are willing to assist and help. And if we're going to have sweeps, then we need to get together and say, how does that really look? Because I'm disturbed when I hear that we are storing things, and then we have others who are saying, no, that's not true. So we really need to work out what the disparities are in all of this work, so that it is done in a humane way, and we understand what is really happening, how, what is the process, and how do people retrieve their things? What kind of timelines are there? And really, where are people going? Because the other question is, if we're going to have safe parking, a safe space, how long is it going to take us to identify a space? It's really important. It needs to be one of the utmost important things that we do. Because we can sweep and keep sweeping, but what we're doing is we're going in other places, and we just keep going around and around and around. And ultimately, yes, it's clean for a moment and a time, but how are we going to begin to have? to have real progress in the work? And that's what I really want to see. And I heard District 4, I want to say this, everyone's not here anymore, I heard you, District 4, loud and clear. I get it, and I understand. I hear you. I hear your pain, and I understand. I understand why people are upset on both sides. And I hear the, our unhoused community saying, "I don't want to live with trash. I don't want to live this way. I don't want crime where I am staying." I hear that deeply as well. And the reality is that we have to have a balanced approach, so that we have safety at all points and at all ends, while we are continuing to move forward in this process.
All right. So I'm going to try to close this out and summarize some next steps, and in the interest of time and with the hour, I'll paraphrase my own feelings. I think it's really been said by my colleagues, I think it's so important that we come together as a community, that we center around our values, and that we develop, we have a lot of trauma as a community. I appreciate my colleague saying that. We've got to be able to be in spaces where we can be more vulnerable, where we can disagree, where we can build trust, and we can move forward to solutions. Because I think the thing we all agree on is that the system that we've had hasn't been working. And I have said for a while that our, the concerns, what's been so frustrating for me is that the concerns align, Mr. O'Malley said this, and you said it perfectly, I think you're still here, yeah, the concerns align most of the time. If you go into encampments, and I was a co-founder of the ACLU chapter, I've been out in encampments, I've been out at sweeps with some of the people here, I, you talk to folks and they say, "We're scared, we don't want the crime, we don't want the arson, we don't want the dumping, the sanitation's horrible." They're saying the same things. And if we agree on 95% of things, let's work on those things. To me, it's, I think we needed to just get some stuff out, and I appreciate everybody that's commented, because we just haven't been able to have the space to have this conversation, but there are opportunities for us to make progress. Yes, this is a huge issue, you know, nationally, California especially, and in our region, but there is opportunity for us to make progress. So I'm going to skip a lot of the other stuff that I was going to say. I think the broader community, and I did canvass this past year, we hit 13,000 houses and talked to just thousands of people, there's pretty broad consensus in Vallejo that we want a humane approach to this issue, and we want safe and clean public spaces. And I just, I think we can do that. I just, I really don't want us to fall for that false binary, so I appreciate what my colleagues have said about making sure that we rebuild trust in how the city conducts cleanups. I'll say this right now, I'm going to be totally transparent. I've been out, supposedly the city was doing cleanups three, two, three, four years ago. I have been out at cleanups where I have had to make a human shield to keep a backhoe from killing a dog, where we have had to make a human shield to keep people's trusted belongings from going. So something is breaking down in the process. And we need to identify where that breakdown is in the process, because the policy and the process that was outlined tonight seems very reasonable, that you would give notice if we're going to clear out a space or clean up a space, that the city is going to come, they're going to store folks' stuff. I think many of the advocates on the ground have seen that that doesn't happen. And so, where is the breakdown? Where is it happening? Councilmember Matias suggested having CBOs, trusted orgs, the homeless union is a great place to start, but some of our community organizations, why don't we do the cleanups together? The Berkeley model is a good one, where we can clean up spaces and bring dumpsters and rebuild trust together. I agree with Councilmember Lettigou, I think we're going to have an exercise of futility if we're displacing people and not giving them somewhere to go. I went down to the flood and wastewater, so there's, you know, there were a couple of big clearings in, up by River Park, and then Lemon, and I think Lemon and Dur were the two big RV camp clearings, and a lot of those RVs went right by flood and wastewater. A lot of the tents went right over here by the ferry terminal, and if you walk into those places and you talk to those folks, which I have, they say, "Yeah, we were over at Lemon and Dur, and now we're here." "Oh yeah, we were over at River Park, oh, we were downtown, oh, we were over on Yuba by Children's Wonderland, and we got swept and now we're here." And we heard it from some of the speakers tonight, that they've been through five or six or 10 of these. That's just, that's not solving anything, and it's really traumatizing people. So I agree, I think we need to really fast-track the safe space for people to go, so that when we do need to clean up a space, if there's a, if there's a high priority space where we just can't have an encampment, that we have someplace where people can be relocated safely with dignity and in community together. Because it just, I really, I don't want us to just spend city resources without addressing the root cause of the problem. So personally, I agree with, you know, let's get the community-based organizations involved and try to start rebuilding the trust, let's try to do some cleanups together, and let's find a safe place, so that when we do identify, I mean, the flood and wastewater, that's a hazard, that's dangerous, but where are those folks going to go? We need to find a place for those RVs, and we need to do it like yesterday. Where are those RVs going to go? Because they can't be by our wastewater treatment plant. But if we just sweep it without giving them a place to go, guess where they're going? They're going back to River Park, and we start the cycle again. Or they're going back to Lemon and Dur, and we're starting the cycle again, and it's not fair to anybody. So I'm, you know, coming up with the procedure. Councilmember Palmaras said it, what's a cleanup, what's a sweep, what's the difference? Because I think to the unhoused, the cleanups have felt like sweeps, and they've displaced folks, and they've damaged belongings, so can we clarify what that is and get some more transparency and rebuild that process together? Let's focus and identify some priority areas, places like White Slough Waterways, we were, Councilmember Matulik mentioned it, trying to tackle the really, really horrible criminal activity that is terrorizing our unhoused residents as well, some of this arms trafficking and drug trafficking. You know, let's really go after the actual crime that's happening, that's affecting all of our communities, and then identify some spaces where we really want to focus and say, "Look, we really just want this area, this park, this area near a school, you know, we just can't, we just can't have this here." And then identify somewhere else where we want that. Regional strategy with county and partners. I personally, I was going to say, let's convene a task force, and I would like to suggest, in addition to what everyone has said, that with respect to the strategic plan, I was looking at Concord's, and they, if you look at page two of Concord's unhoused strategic plan, which came out last year, there was a working group of probably about 20 people, city council, city staff, and community members. And I think we should do that. So I think Vallejo, we need to come up with a strategy. I don't want to nominate Councilmembers Lettigou and Palmaras, but since you are both on the JPA, I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm just throwing it out there. I'm happy to be part of it too, to come up with that plan.
And I want to be part of that too, I'm part of the tri-pie.
So we'll come up with a plan to, you know, get that together, make sure we have the right people, you know, brought into the room and get going on that, so we get our strategic plan. It blows my mind that we haven't done a needs assessment, that we're just spending, throwing money and have it, so we got to do that. Let's get our organizations involved, let's not reinvent the wheel, we have people that know where folks are. So I think my proposal tonight is to do, to identify, and this is, we're not going to be able to do this all right now, we're going to have to, I mean, it's going to have to be in many iterations. I think we've got to identify and communicate some priority areas, that we're going to say, the city is really going to focus on keeping this criteria space clean. Oakland had a, I forget what they called it, but they had a criteria that was within a certain feet of a home, within a certain feet of a school, within a certain feet of a waterway, something like that. I think we need to have some criteria of going, like, these are our priority spaces that we really need to keep clean, that we're going to do together. We've got to identify the safe camping and parking areas. There are a few that were presented that are out. I was surprised nobody that was here balked at River Park being on the list, I think that one can be taken off the list. And I think the Broadway in Tennessee, I mean, there's a business there now. So we need to update some of those locations, but identify a couple. I love the face, the idea of faith-based parking lot, I think that's got pretty broad support. The strategic plan work group, bringing the homeless roundtable into the city, that's what I've got right now. Yeah. Yeah. And then, actually, Councilmember Palmaras was first.
And outreach team?
Yeah, do we want to do that through the strategic plan work group?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe that's, so that that group can be tasked with that outreach plan, yeah.
Perfect.
I mean, we're not going to be able to give full direction, we're going to have to do one more iteration of this, because we need to revisit the, we need to revisit the cleanup policy and a plan to make sure that it's, I don't think we, I don't think we can just turn the switch back on and read, I'm not comfortable with it, because it, it doesn't, it doesn't solve the mistrust, it doesn't solve the problem. Councilmember Lettigou, you had something, and then Councilmember Matias.
Sorry about that. So as it relates to locations, we cannot use the fairgrounds?
Yeah, I forgot that, thank you.
So I just want to remind us of that, and that's because it's an emergency designation site for California and the Bay Area, so the fairgrounds is not an option at all.
Through the mayor, if I may? I just want to remind individuals in the community who may be watching, that the sites proposed tonight were not actually being proposed, those were previous locations. Council in the community had asked what had previous councils seen, so that is not staff's recommendations, just revisiting and resharing information that was shown back in 2020.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification. Yeah, those were out, and that was the, I think that was the point, is some of those have become outdated. Councilmember Matias.
I'll let the vice mayor go next, then I'll go.
I was just going to say that I think that we should vote on the sweeps, it shouldn't just be a unilateral decision.
Yep.
I said that I think that we should take a vote on whether we continue the sweeps and not just have it be a universal decision.
Yep. And I was just going to add to your list of recommending, I agree with the vice mayor on that, and then to your list of recommendations, and the two-by-two should have coordination happening, like, because we need to take care of our youth too, so I would just really add that to your list.
Yeah, thank you, I did write that down. Yeah, I mean, we're talking about really vulnerable populations, disproportionately people of color, we're talking about children, we're talking about seniors, disabled veterans, LGBTQ+ individuals, we just had Trans Day of Visibility yesterday, we know folks, I mean, we've got, we've got real vulnerable populations that we have to look out for here. Councilmember Gordon.
Also too, I know that, the reason I asked to show the map was because not only my colleague, District 4 is affected by the situation, but so is District 6. As you just pointed out, Ryder is in District 6, Lemon and Dur is in District 6, Lincoln and Benicia is District 6. So we definitely want to make sure that wherever we are housing our individuals, we want to make sure they have access to bathrooms, food, locations, places where they can, able to take showers, and so I challenged that. And I definitely want to appreciate the gentleman who spoke, who also served on the tri-pie, did you say, Dre? I want to thank you for being here and trying to be part of the solution, and I definitely want to get with you, because I will be meeting with you all next month for my first time. Thanks to my colleague, JR Matulik, who invited me to it, I'm excited, because most of, everybody in the room is lived experience, and so we definitely want to find solutions that way. I would like to add to your, your list, is identifying families with children who are unhoused. As we know, a couple years back, we lost a little girl whose parents both worked, and to keep each other warm, they kept their car on, and she did not survive. Do you all remember that, the waterfront? So we don't want that to happen again. We also had unhoused located at the waterfront, where the situation got out of control. And that's why I think it's important, if we do anything, we need to make sure that there is security, make sure that it's under control, whatever we do, because we saw how bad that got, and we don't want that anymore, not for themselves, not for our city. So thank you for those recommendations allowing me to make.
Councilmember Palmaras.
I'd like to present an alternate motion. So, yes, let's vote on the sweeps, but I'd like to proffer that it's sweeps plus the caveat, that we are immediately including the CBOs, all the community stakeholders, so that while we're doing this, it is, it is all that transparency, if we see anything that doesn't look right, doesn't smell right, it gets addressed at that moment. So I don't want this to be, you know, I want this to be a process where we're kind of piloting it, right, but I also don't want it to be, you know, what we had before, I guess. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, I agree with you, and I apologize, Councilmember Matulik has been wanting to get in, and I forgot, I don't know if you still want to get in, but I would just say, I agree, I'm not a fan of the idea of up-down vote on, going back to the way it was. I think we should think beyond that, but I'm happy to go with whatever folks want us to vote on. Councilmember Matulik, did you still want to get in?
Yes, please, then, thank you for that, Mayor. And I think one of the things that, if we are going to take a vote on the sweeps or not, I think we need to have a plan in place of, if we are doing the sweeps, where are these people going? I mean, if we don't have that, we're just playing whack-a-mole of, we may clean up one area, but it's going to create a situation in another, another area. So that's part of that, I think, that conversation, that needs to happen, but I also want to kind of, I know Councilmember Matias brought up the issue of bringing up, of having the two, in the two-by-two, having more information or report back from the McKenney-Bento situation, and I know about three or four months ago, in our two-by-two, we actually had the McKenney-Bento, Ms. Angela Kelly Santos from the school district, do a McKenney-Bento report, so I can request that she come in front of this council to kind of give us a better understanding, and maybe do a re-report from that two-by-two, and she's probably got updated information since we're closing out to the end of the year of some McKenney-Bento information. And I think, and I think, I think, I think that's it that I have, I think it's just basically, I'd be, I think we've got some great ideas, but I think we need to get to a point of getting some clear direction of how we're going to be moving forward with the rest of this. Thank you.
Councilmember Matias.
So, I'm going to make a formal proposal, and I think you guys all know the drill with me, I don't like the meetings, the ongoing meetings, to talk about the same thing over and over again. I think we've got to show progress while we work on all of these different issues. We owe it to the community. So my proposal will be the following. The cleanups resume in two weeks with partnership from faith-based leaders, community-based organizations, the homeless union, so that they can monitor the cleanups that are taking place, and they can report back to us on whether or not there's stuff that's going on, and we can iterate as time goes on. And at the same time, the working group should convene, and we should work through some of these things that you've elevated, what's going to be the safe parking location, what is going to be, you know, the meeting cadence, because otherwise, we're going to have two, three, four, five more meetings to talk about things. Now we're into the summer, we're into the fall, and we've got to make decisions. So that's sort of my proposal on the table, resuming two weeks with participation from other folks, so that they can monitor what the staff is doing, and at the same time, we have the working group convene and start to map out what solutions look like, and then they can come back together and present to us.
And to clarify, you're talking about cleanups rather than, are you talking about the sweeps that displaced people, or just thinking about cleanups?
I mean, you asked a question earlier, so can you just clarify the sweeps and the cleanups and?
Yes, so encampment cleanups is the terminology that the city uses. Cleanups include the relocation of individuals from a site. Prior to, our prior to Grants Pass, cleanups were just merely doing a cleanup, not moving individuals. So cleanups, I guess at council's direction, could include movement of individuals or cleanups with no movement of individuals.
Okay, so I heart, I just want to put something on the table here. I heart has been doing case management, and has been doing case management for some time now, and they do quarterly report outs. I-Hart has been doing case management, and has been doing case management for some time now, and they do quarterly report outs. So, I am of the view that if we have an engagement with I-Hart, they should also be participating in this process so that they can talk to folks about resources available at the county level and in our community. They've already been doing that, I don't know why we are not including them in this process. So, I would just say that as that's happening, they should also be a part of the process, and we should also talk to them about a possible augmentation of the, the work that they're currently doing in our community, because that's what we need. We need staff to work in partnership with Natalie. We need more folks to talk to our unhoused folks, understand what their needs are, and then connect them to resources while this broader group is putting solutions together. You guys can disagree, I'm just putting a proposal on the table.
No, I appreciate it, and you, so you were, that was news to me, that I, I always thought of, I always distinguished a cleanup from a sweep and whether it displaces the individual. So, you're suggesting cleanups, are we displacing people or we're just cleaning up? And I'm not putting, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm genuinely just trying to clarify.
This is, I want the cleanups to continue in the way that they were continuing, but I want there to be conversations with folks ahead of time so that we can connect them to resources. So, we need to continue what we were doing, and I actually proposed in high-traffic areas. My proposal was very specific. We've got the ferry building, and there's a huge encampment there, we've got areas by waterways, like, so my proposal was targeted, this is more broad, we're just saying, now I'm saying cleanups across the entire city, whereas like, what I was proposing before was high-trafficked areas, the library, the, the, the parking lot across the ferry building, like, areas where you're just seeing a lot of traffic, foot traffic. So, it's up to you guys to suggest an alternative. But I would like cleanups with more participation to resume in two weeks.
All right, I've got Vice Mayor Bergenzer, Vice Mayor Bergenzer, and then Councilmember Lettu.
I actually agree with the two colleagues at the end. I think that we need to continue the, the cleanup sweeps, whatever term you want to call it. But I do think that we need to include the other groups as well as starting the roundtable discussions. But I would like to add, adding the dumpsters as part of the notification of the cleanup so that we can have some self-maintenance before the, the city actually gets there and does the, the cleanups.
Councilmember Lettu.
To our city attorney's office, so what is the process? If we identify a space for safe parking, literally, how long does it take for us to say, we're in its city-owned, we can use this area? And you don't get 10 months, I'm just being really honest. How quick can we say we're going to use this area?
If it's a city-owned property.
City, I'm talking about a city-owned property.
I think that we could, I think that we could be pretty quick on it, it, it depends on a number of factors. Some of these properties that we've looked at before had contamination and things like that, so we'd want to be able to do at least an initial environmental study to make sure we're not putting people.
So we don't have, so let me ask a question. So, we don't have any city-owned properties that we know already are clean, that aren't contaminated? We don't understand what's going on with it.
Through the mayor, I, I think that we could pull together that information, because there are a few, and bring that, that back to council for a pretty quick decision. But a couple factors, yes, we'd have to do a phase one no matter what, even if it was done a year ago, just to ensure that it was safe. And then number two, we'd want to identify how much it'll cost for us with the garbage and the restrooms and the security before you make that decision, so you have all the info in front of you. And then maybe we could bring, you know, three, four, or five locations, and council could give that directive. I think we could probably come back pretty quickly in a month-ish or so, in the next two to three meetings with that list and those numbers for you guys to take a look at. It also depends on the number of safe parking and safe tents, right? So each location will have a different size or capacity, so we would have to bring those back to you and say, this site you can get 50, here you can get 30, that type of information, if that would work.
The other thing I, I want to make sure I add is, other than on church properties, there's a zoning, potential zoning issue as well, and I know you asked about city-owned properties. Somebody mentioned earlier the question about safe parking and/or camping sites on church properties faster because there was an amendment in the law last year to allow that. But in terms of, the city has to, by its own zoning ordinance, comply with its own code, so housing, sorry, or camping would have to be allowed on those sites, or we'd have to amend the code to allow it.
Okay. I'm gonna add one comment, and then I am seeing Councilmember Matulik, and then Councilmember Gordon, and then Councilmember Paul Maras. And I think my comment around the dumpster, I think dumpsters make sense if people are going to be remaining there, but if we're, if we're giving a notice and saying, you're gonna get displaced, we're gonna sweep this and clear this out, and we put a dumpster, I, I don't, I mean, to me, it's, it's, I don't, I don't think that that makes sense or feels, feels good to folks, like, here, clean up your space, and then you don't have to go, you know, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here, basically. Like, go somewhere else in the city, find where you're going. I, I'm, I think the dumpster piece makes sense if it's where people are going to remain, so that they have the dumpster. I, I, I agree with Councilmember Matulik's point about, I just, if, if people, if we don't have somewhere for folks to go, I think we've got to find, I think we've got to have somewhere for folks to go. And we, we, we can, we might, we, we might, we might end up disagreeing, and that's fine, we can vote, but I just, I don't know that this is going to work unless we have somewhere for folks to go. So I'll turn it over to Councilmember Matulik.
Through the mayor, if I may, really quickly, in regards to the dumpsters, there are regulations of things that can and can't be put in there, so we would have to work through that process with recology of how we maintain or verify that items that are not allowed to be in there, such as tires, et cetera, are not getting put into the dumpsters. There's certain materials that have to be disposed of in a certain way.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Matulik, and then Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor, and to follow up with Councilmember Matias's request about, or our comment about a more robust case management, and I think this goes beyond, and whether we can even get to this level is going beyond the pit count that we know is under, i- i- that number's way below, but taking it to a higher level of case management, in my mind, that's talking about identifying each individual, what their situation is, and what, what solutions that they, or what supports that, that they may need, and whether that's an I-Hart thing, or whether that's the homeless advocates, whether they have programs or the case management ability to do that, that's where we need to get to that level, that next level. And I was happy to hear from Dre that it sounds like, from my time on the Tri-Partside Advisory Board, that it seems like some of the services, specifically Vallejo, has been expanded a little bit, and, but, because the biggest challenge that, that we were experiencing, at least at my time, on the, on that advisory board, was that the referrals that were going through the county weren't on the same platform of what referrals that were needed here at Vallejo. So that whole conversation and that whole logistics need to happen of, we know there, there are unhoused that need certain supports, but whether those referrals are getting to the right place to get them that support, that's the next level of conversation, I think that needs to happen, that Dre and I have had those, those conversations without having that ability to, to get that resolution to figure it out. But that's just bringing back to the point of, Councilmember Matias's point of, if we're gonna bring in case management, we need to bring it to a case management that, that is actually feasible, practicable, and can actually get results from that. So thank you for that.
Thanks. Councilmember Gordon, and then Councilmember Paul Maras.
I'd like to make a motion that we start up the cleanup sweeps within one to two weeks. We clean, but we have to keep in mind, also too with I-Hart, that that's a different contract. We have to remember that. And so we need to make sure that we establish that from them. And I met with the, the owner, so there, it is amazing program, but we have to remember that that's a different contract. And how can we supply wraparound services to our unhoused? But we have, I think, I think it's important to bring oncology to the situation where we can help with cleanup until that timeframe, provide, because like they said, that, you know, everybody said that they don't want to live in trash, so we need to provide them, and let me tell what I did over Lincoln and Benicia. I took big, large trash bags, and I gave them, and they were over on that side, you can ask anybody, they would put it on the side of the, on the side across the street, and then when they did their regular cleanup, that, to pick up trash, they would pick up those trash. And so, we, that's a proven point that people don't want to live in trash. So, so if we could think of something in that nature, how we can better partner with, with two people who's doing this, Flora, thank you, and Natalie, thank you. How can we support our, our staff? And I hope we gave you some clear directions. Is that a good proposal?
Well, we have a motion, we still have two more folks that want to comment. So, I'm gonna go, Councilmember Paul Maras, and then Councilmember Matias. And if I, if we have comments, we can give those, and then we'll vote.
I, I think we're all 95% saying the same thing. The only caveat is, we, we need to invite our coordination program, Resource Connect Solano. So, we can invite, and we should invite I-Hart, but I don't know if that's within their scope, but RCS is the one that actually has the contacts within the COC, so, they, they have to be there.
Councilmember Matias.
I just want to be super clear, because when I made my proposal, I was very specific in what I was calling for, but now I'm gonna add additional specificity. So, the cleanups to resume within two weeks. I would like staff to evaluate 500 Redwood as a possible location. That was part of the presentation, and that was one of the locations offered a few years ago. The other ones, they don't work for different reasons. And, again, part of what should be happening between now and then is leveraging I-Hart, leveraging our community organizations to see what available resources can be provided within that timeframe. So, I-Hart goes, identifies needs, makes connections to whether that's a county shelter in another city, or the one, or can we open up our space? And at the same time, we have involvement from these other groups to make sure that they're also monitoring taking place, so that they can give us feedback on what it is that we can change, so that we can start iterating and improving on what past practice, on the past practice that has been in place. That's my proposal, you guys can suggest an alternative.
That sounds like a motion to me.
Wouldn't that be an, so that's an alternate motion, or very similar motion with a friendly amendment? Comments, or do we want to vote? All right, we've been asked to have you say it again.
Hey, I, okay.
I'm so sorry, through the mayor, before you begin your motion, I did want to note that 500 Redwood is not publicly owned property, and is going through the process, I believe, for development, so that may be kind of off the table to begin. We, we can look, but just as the caveat, it's not public, so it'll take a little bit more research on that.
Okay. So, evaluate 500 Redwood, involve I-Hart, provide case management on whatever list of, whatever, I would be prioritizing high-trafficked areas. It's my proposal for cleanups. And those, for those cleanups to resume within two weeks, for staff to convene with the other groups, with the roundtable, and some of the other folks that have been called out during this meeting, to work through some of the suggestions outlined in this meeting, and then we should get a report out, not just on that location, not just on the upcoming, upcoming cleanups, but on possible solutions to some of the questions that were raised by council members.
Council, I've got Councilmember Lettu, and then we'll come over.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Gordon.
Do, do we have to meet again to vote for that location, or can we get staff authorization to that location? Just asking. All right, thank you for that clarifying question.
Councilmember Lettu.
So, to our Assistant City Manager, as it relates to whatever the locations are gonna be, even if it's 500 Redwood, you're still saying it's gonna take how many weeks?
At least a month for us to pull those together.
Sorry, through the mayor, yeah, we'd have to pull together, to Veronica's point, the zoning code challenges and what permits are required, the cost for security bathrooms, garbage, so we'd have to reach out to those companies and get scopes and the costs, decide, decide which parcel, how many acres, and what size, and how many tents or cars we can fit. You know, see if there's been a phase one or not, and then, sounds like we need to go through each and every one of these sites over again and see what else, you know, publicly owned or city-owned we have. So it's gonna take me at least four weeks probably. Scopes in general usually take two to three weeks to get back, so, that's my estimate.
I have a follow-up question, so I, I had brought the list of council referrals, and I, so I have both Mayor McConnell and former, former Mayor McConnell and former Mayor, Vice Mayor Luera Diaz, in late 2022, options for locating a safe RV location, so safe parking, camping. I have it council-directed to scope on February 14th, 2023, and then I have it listed as completed. So, what analysis was done in 2022 and 2023 with respect to this? And can we use some of that analysis, since that was directly, it's, it's listed on here as completed?
We worked on that, and those were locations that were not feasible. For example, 5 Midway we were looking at, we were looking at it for Nav Center or Safe Camping, and it ended up having a contamination level from the laundry materials that we couldn't use that location. So some of that analysis I can bring back, we, we came.
Well, with sites that wouldn't work, then that's, we don't need to rehash that.
So that's kind of where we landed, and we brought different sites in '22, and then early in 2023, we went through all of them with the city council. At that time, none of them were deemed feasible, or the council was not willing to move forward with the sites brought forward.
Councilmember Gordon.
We also have to keep in mind, we, do we have to have insurance on these locations?
Absolutely. Through the mayor, can I make one clarifying statement? So I'm hearing like, a lot of things, and a lot of really good stuff, but I'm trying to prioritize and cull it down so that I can understand exactly what the majority of council wants us to move forward on. It sounds like maybe one vote that Councilmember Matias is, is proposing over the cleanups and the details that he specified there, but then also I'm hearing four other items, so I just want to make sure that this is correct in my notes here. I'm hearing bring back a few sites, including 500 Redwood and others, process, cost, all of those things, and bring that to council for consideration. Then I'm also hearing convene a working group that would work on strategic plan, and remember, we sent you a draft that staff has started, so there's been some work done, but work on the strategic plan, priority cleanup areas, possible augmentation of case management, all of the things that this working group would work on, is that correct? And then separately, the homeless roundtable, working with Vallejo together on taking over the roundtable. Is that separate, or is that the same working group?
I, I think that, it's kind of, it would probably end up being the same people. I would say that the working group, we would want to have that be an official group of council, though. That would be of, that would be something council would lead, is my, would be my understanding. That, that council would appoint people to that, and we would formalize it.
Okay, so, formal council group, but the roundtable already exists, so those then would be probably two different meetings. Yeah, and then lastly, I heard the two by two coordination and coordinating with families with children, which I think could go through the two by two, and the school district resources. So, the cleanups, the proposed potential parking sites, the council working group, the homeless roundtable, and then the two by two coordination, is that mostly inclusive, or am I missing?
You're missing, because there's some, there's some places that are not connected to the Vallejo Unified School District, such as Elite, private schools, Caliber, and so forth.
So private and public? And charter?
Go ahead, Councilmember Matias.
I think the thing that I'm struggling with, again, and now I'm, I want to talk about location. locations, is like, we've known this has been a thing for four years, so, and we have a lot of land in our city, so why can't we identify a list of locations, whether they're publicly owned or otherwise? I actually looked at all of the locations that you guys shared with us, and there were, I don't know, maybe one or two that I was like, oh, maybe, but it still wouldn't make sense. So what I'm asking for very specifically is like, is there a list? We have a lot of open space in our community, can you bring back a list that specifically calls out locations that can accommodate different options? And part of what I'm also saying is that we also need to tap into our community, and so several of us have already shared that the faith-based community can probably be an alternative for a safe parking option overnight. So I don't think that one location should be a one-size-fits-all approach, I think we need to be looking at all of the things.
Through the mayor, we definitely can do that, that's what I said, we can bring back all the city sites, and then it'll just be an analysis of feasibility, and, you know, working with the community, and working with where council thinks is most appropriate, and again, just weighing through all the costs, and the zoning code, the permitting, the, you know, just looking through the feasibility of each of those sites. I'm happy to bring, we have emailed out the council the full list of city-owned properties, so you have the whole huge list of, I don't know, there's 600 and some properties, some of them are currently being used, but we're happy to go through that and kind of highlight where we think recommendations would be for best practices, talk to faith-based, look at other private, I mean, the Church of the Nazarene probably may still be interested in the tents that they proposed a few years back, so we could reach out to those communities and see if there's other alternatives there as well, when we come back with, with the list.
Wouldn't that be the working groups discussion? Wouldn't that be the working groups discussion to talk about the faith-based?
Okay, either way, whatever you want, we'll do.
So I'm wondering if you, council members, one of you would be willing to make a motion or motions, so that staff is clear on what you want us to do, there are lots of ideas out there, so if we know what you collectively want to do as a body, that would be really helpful for us.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lettu.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to say it, there's at least four of us that have agreed on cleanups, and so from my vantage point, we should take a vote. If you don't agree with it, you can vote against it, if you agree with it, you do, we move it forward, right? And then the separate items is the rest of the package of things that we've asked staff to return.
For that to happen, someone needs to make a formal motion, and that cuts off the debate.
We've had a motion, there have been two motions, there was a motion.
I didn't, I didn't hear the word motion, it's a proposal.
And then Councilmember Matias was an amendment to the motion, so we would be voting on the amended motion. Councilmember Lettu, you're.
No, and I'm not ready to vote on any of it. I want to ask a question, because I'm just trying to get some real clarity around conversation, because we make a motion, and then I really want some movement, so we're not, so we're getting to a final decision the next time we come back and have this conversation. So as it relates to the faith-based community, because there are new laws that allow faith-based communities to do other, different things, and they're more flexible, we do have different congregations that help with the unhoused, and feed, and all these different things, and so the real question is, while we're in this two-week period, we can, there's nothing stopping us from having these conversations, right? And, I'm sorry?
I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm, just want to make it clear, so that we can be done and have a decision, because I really want to come back, I don't want to spend another month having this conversation. I want to get done, I want to have a solution, and begin the process of all the things that we have to do. So I just want to make sure we're not bandit of, can't talk to this person, and so forth and on. Okay.
All right, so we're ready to vote, and you had added in that the community-based organizations, that encompassed everything, right? Councilmember Matias.
Yes, and I just want to be super clear here, this has been something that the community, whether you are a member of the unhoused community, or a member of the house community, that we have been talking about for five years now. This is unacceptable, like, we have to start making progress and get to a place where we can all move forward together, and that's really my goal behind this, like, because otherwise, we're going to be talking about the same thing in a year, so.
All right, we might as well go ahead and vote on it. Oh yeah, we're going to need a roll call vote.
I totally forgot about that.
Just for clarity, a yes vote means you want to continue the sweeps, and the no vote means you don't want to continue sweeps.
Correct.
In two weeks' time.
Within two weeks, with the CBOs, Resource Connect Solano, I heart, faith-based, is that correct? Those three, okay.
Vallejo almost union.
Are we adding the union? Yes, yes, that's, okay.
Okay, are we ready? Mayor Soros.
No.
Vice Mayor Bergenzer.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Councilmember Lettu.
Yes.
Councilmember Tulok.
No, with the qualification, or the understanding, that in my mind, we're moving forward without having a clear plan of what the sweep fully entails, so, no.
Yes.
And Councilmember Palmaras.
Aye.
So the motion carries with the mayor, and Councilmember Tulok opposed.
All right, and then do we need another motion for the rest of the stuff? I'll go ahead and make that motion, can I just move that we do the list of things we talked about earlier, and we'll just vote on that?
The list that Gillian read.
Yeah. Let's go ahead and vote.
Vice Mayor Bergenzer.
Yes.
Councilmember Matias.
Yes.
Palmaras.
Aye.
Gordon.
Yes.
Lettu.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bergenzer.
Yes, again.
Sorry, and Councilmember Tulok.
Yes.
That motion carries unanimously.
No, I didn't vote, and I'm also a yes. That's an 8-0 vote, all right. That is, quickly, yes.
I just want to say to the people out there that this is not, this was not easy for us at all. Please don't take this as we're discounting or being inconsiderate to you. This was not easy for us, and I hope you understand that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
All right, I believe that's it, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn us at 11:53 PM.